This conference will now be recorded.
Good morning, everyone. It is October 26, 2021. This is the Clatsop County Conference of Plan Update Joint Planning Commission of the County, or the Planning Commission and the Countywide Citizen Advisory Committee. Welcome. We will get started with our agenda, and I'll call this meeting to order. Our first thing is we'll go through and do introductions. I'll try to call around the room here. A lot of people don't have their cameras on yet. That's okay. But if I misidentify you, just let me know. I'm Andy Davis. I'm the chair of this group, and I'm coming from the Countywide Advisory Committee. I live in Astoria. Gail, could you introduce yourself?
Yes, Gail Hendrickson, Community Development Director.
Thanks, Gail. I see Pamela Matson-McDonald. If you get the chance, Pamela, you're welcome to introduce yourself. Carrie, could you introduce yourself?
Morning, everyone. This is Carrie Johnson, and I am a planning commissioner. I live out in the John Day area. And I apologize, my camera is not working this morning.
Okay. Jim?
Hi there, Andy. It's Pamela. Okay, thank you so much.
No problem. Thank you for joining us today. Jim Allegria?
Hi, I'm Jim Allegria. I'm on the Countywide Advisory Committee from Astoria.
Thanks, Jim. Robert Circlin?
Hi. Hail and farewell. I am, in the moment, on the Planning Commission, and that's the Plans Advisory Committee. If all goes smoothly after tomorrow's kangaroo court, I should be nicely ejected from therefrom. And it's been lovely being with you all. So hail and farewell.
Thank you for joining us today, Robert. Charles Dice.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yeah, you're pretty faint, but I can.
Okay, I'll up my mic a little bit. So my name's Charles Dice. I'm on the Southwest Coastal Citizens Advisory Committee, and also liaison of the Countywide Advisory Committee, and I live in Cove Beach at the south end of the county.
Thank you, Charles. John, I think, John Orr, I think we're getting some, um, mic interference friction from you, FYI. Yeah, I realized that I was trying to see in my deteriorating vision which was the visual and which is the audio. So the audio is on, and the video is, there's, there I am. Hi, yeah, I'm John Orr. I'm here to serve. Thank you, John. Thank you for joining us today. Cheryl, can you introduce yourself?
Cheryl Johnson from out in Brown Smith. We lost the electricity all day yesterday, so I'm actually glad to be here with you with electricity today. I'm on the Citizen Advisory Council for Northeast Clatsop County, and I am the liaison to the Countywide CAC.
Thanks, Cheryl. Glad your power's back. Lindsay Davis?
Morning. I'm Lindsay Davis with Hampton Family Forest out here in Napa.
Thank you for joining us, Lindsay. Lam? Can you hear us, Lam?
Yes, good morning. My name is Lam Kwang. I'm the Planning Commissioner in Lewis and Clark and Woluski area.
Great. Thank you for joining us. Pat Corcoran?
Good morning. I'm Pat Corcoran. I live in Astoria, and I'm a member of the Countywide Advisory Committee.
Nadia Gardner?
Hi, everybody. Nadia Gardner down in Arch Cape, just south of Cannon Beach. I'm the Chair of the Clatsop County Planning Commission.
Thanks, Nadia. Cheryl Conway?
Hi, I'm Cheryl Conway. I live in Astoria. I'm just an interested resident.
Thanks, Cheryl. And then Chad Washington?
Good morning. I'm Chad Washington, stewardship and community engagement coordinator for Greenwood Resources, managers of Lewis and Clark Timberlands.
Okay, thanks, Chad. Thank you for joining us today. And then I've got a caller 01 that I don't see identified. If you're calling in and I haven't called you yet, could you identify yourself?
Good morning. I'm Pam Birmingham. I'm on the LC Jewel Committee, and just sitting in for a bit before I have to run out to work.
Okay. Thank you for joining us for a bit, Pam. Okay, did I miss anyone? I think I got everyone that's up on my screen. Okay, it doesn't sound like it. So let's go ahead to CAC Liaison Reports. Clatsop Plans, Robert?
Hi. A lot of ours was simply supporting staff recommendations. But I'd also like to note that I think we've had lovely interaction with Colonel Philip Johnson, who is the Camp Realea representative. He actually lives there, and, you know, it has, we have so often dealt with consultants and others, but he, you know, he's obviously not to blame for points of grievances, and was quite welcoming, like, to indigenous inquiries, wanting to coordinate sometime to go walk certain areas out there. So I thought that was especially charming to have some new, good, live interaction with such an important part of the Clatsop Plans community. And that's about it. Oh, it will probably have kind of a decimated Clatsop Plans Advisory Committee shortly as soon as the new rules are disseminated to the committee members. I'm quite certain that at least one other will go, and I think will notice a change in the dynamics as the participation is reduced.
Thank, thank you for the heads up on that, too, Robert. So it looks like, I just want to ask real quick, it looks like we've got a new caller 1. Pam, I see your name now, so caller, well, caller 2 now on my screen. If you just called in, could you identify yourself so we know who else on the call?
Yeah, this is Camp Realea. This is Mr. Phil Johnson. I'm trying to get in on the go-to meeting, but I've just dialed in because it had me in a holding pattern trying to get into the meeting to let me in, but I'm going to log back out and try to get back onto my computer again.
Okay. Well, thank you for joining us, even if it's giving you a hard time right now, Phil.
Yeah, well, I'll keep working on it. Thank you. I've got all the printouts and everything in front of me, so I'll follow along on the phone if I have to, so I'll keep trying. Thank you.
Great. So Pam Birmingham, thank you for calling in for the moment, anyway. Given that we don't have your liaison on the call this morning yet, would you care to report for LC Jewel Seaside Rural and just let us know what's been going on in your recent meetings?
Um, certainly. I thought Susanna would be here, so I must admit I'm 100% unprepared. It's just been the two of us, and we've worked through issues. Gail, anything you can help me with? I'm sorry, I had not prepared, as I said, and I was out for the last day.
The responsibility is mine for that, so I apologize. But Gail, do you have anything?
Yeah, so both Pam and Susanna have been pulling double duty during this process because they are reviewing two community plans, one for Seaside Rural and one for the LC Jewel area. And so they spent their last meeting working through the, we got through the Seaside Rural plan and the preliminary, very preliminary draft recommendations about deleting old material and incorporating the new material that the committee's recommended. And at their next meeting in November, then we will be looking at the LC Jewel plan. So they've been doing quite a bit of work.
Thank you, Gail. Thank you, Pam, for doing the extra work.
Certainly, and thank you, Gail, for bailing me out there.
Do we, do we have a report coming out of Lewis and Clark for this period?
Yeah, their only report is they will be going through their first draft of their community plan at a meeting Thursday night at 6:00 PM. And so they have basically worked through their existing policies and their community plan, and have gone through their new policies that they want to include, and they'll just start working on their draft over the next few meetings.
Okay, thank you, Gail. Northeast CAC, Cheryl?
We met on October 14, and in the previous month, in September, we had reviewed the majority of the Northeast plan. And so Gail was able to provide us with the draft that included the additions and the deletions that we had made before. And we worked our way through probably two-thirds of that with good, positive discussion. We feel like we're on track and that we will be able to complete the review of the draft in November, and then that we will be able to review the final draft, which is scheduled for December. So we feel like we're making good use of our time, and that we will indeed be able to complete our work by December. Two issues that sort of came up in our way through the entire thing, housing. The need for affordable housing in Clatsop County came up, and it influences or is influenced by everything else, including water hookups in rural communities, access to buses along Highway 30. We are in full support of need for low-income housing in different areas in Clatsop County, and understanding that there will be looking to rural areas, and we are open to that. We discussed duplexes, fourplexes, and of course, always the eternal need to try and cluster that development so that we will continue to protect forest lands and continue to protect agricultural lands. Also, I'm the oldest person on the Northeast CAC, and the other four are all raising young families. There was considerable discussion and concern about climate change. The people on the Northeast CAC, especially those who are raising young families, see a definite need for climate change to be part of the local comprehensive plan, and has been suggested by at least one of the commissioners that Clatsop County simply rely on the statewide rules and regulations for climate change. But the feelings for our families in the future is that we really need to address it also locally. And that's it from us at Northeast.
Okay, thank you, Cheryl. Charles, do you have a Southwest report?
I do. So the Southwest Committee has also been working away on our Southwest Coastal Comprehensive Plan update. We're probably a third of the way through it, and we expect to get finished up at the end of December. We've also enlisted or joined up with the Arch Cape Falco Beach Community Club that is sponsoring some town halls to provide some outreach to the community so that we can get more public input on the major issues surrounding the Comprehensive Plan update for our planning area. We've, in the past, we did spend quite a bit of time going through Goal 5 before the process change for the, for the regional CACs or the planning area CACs. And one of the things when we were, when we were working on that at the county level, there were a number of things that, that we noted that, that hopefully will carry forward into discussion later today. But, you know, certainly for our Southwest area, the key things with respect to Goal 5 were really to make sure that the various inventory lists get updated because there were a number of things that were missed 40 years ago. And that includes things like Cove Beach Lake and Cedar Creek and Mason Creek, and delineating the watersheds for some of our community water systems that did not get represented in the Southwest Coastal Plan. And also, another major issue for us is the preservation of our wetlands. We have a lot of wetlands in the Arch Cape and Cove Beach area, and they really don't have the level of protection that they should. So I'm really hoping that will be a topic that we touch on today. And then the third area of major concern with respect to Goal 5 was our watersheds for our community water organizations. Some of them are actual districts, like the Arch Cape Water District and the Fulton Cove Beach Water District. Others are just community water systems, like Cannonview Park and Arcadia Sands. And those watersheds really do need to be well delineated and on the county map so everybody knows where they are. And we believe that they also, there should be some county-level protection for those watersheds that perhaps goes beyond what's in the current Forest Practices Act. Well, that's what we've been working on.
Okay, thank, thank you for the report, Charles. Gail, anything else before we move on for the CAC Liaison Groups?
No, nothing. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you liaisons for the reports. And again, sorry, Pam, to put you on the spot. We appreciate you being here today, though. Okay, so our next item is public comment and input. So just to lay foundation for this, we've got two items for public comment and input. One at the beginning of the meeting now, one at the end of the meeting after we review Goal 5. At the option of the group, it's possible that we might take public comment within a Goal 5 discussion. But I think as we're on a sort of abbreviated schedule and Goal 5 has substantial material to cover, I don't want to guarantee that members of the public are going to be able to speak on a particular item. So if you want to get public comment in and want to be sure of it, I would recommend making public comment now. We would ask that people limit their comments to three minutes or so, but we'd be happy to take public comment. We have several members of the public with us today. So if you have comment on the material that we're going to be covering today, please let us know. I'll look for mics that become live or people that raise their hands and such. So not seeing any hands going up or mics coming on.
Andy, can I interrupt you?
Sure. Chad, that's Chad?
That's correct. Yeah, I was just wondering what the status is regarding the review of the mineral and aggregate resources. It looks like no review has been conducted to date, and is that still on the list? Will that be, will those policies be reviewed? Are you going to just adopt what was there in 1980? I'd just like some clarity from the commission on that.
Sure, thanks, Chad. I know that we at least gave a cursory review to them within the first round of the Countywide CAC. I don't know if, if any other groups have had the chance to review them yet. I think they're on our agenda today, whether or not we, we get into them in depth or not. I'm not sure. Gail, do you have any clarifying comments for the Mineral and Aggregate Resource section?
Yeah, a lot of the Citizen Advisory Committees didn't go very far in-depth into those policies just because there were so many of them and because they are a little bit more complicated. The recommendations that staff has made doesn't make too many changes to them except to remove outdated references or policies that are no longer applicable. But we did not incorporate any new policies at this time. And I don't know if Chad has a specific concern or something that he wants to raise so that we're aware of it when we get to that section.
Thank you for the clarification, Gail. No, I don't have any specific recommended policies or requests. I just wanted to make sure that that was being looked at as part of the task here.
Thank you, sir, for the question.
Hi, Andy. I can't, I don't know how to raise my hand.
That's okay. We can hear you, so if you have public comment, go for it.
Yeah, I'm really concerned about watersheds and people's access to having clean water. I grew up in Cleveland, Ohio, where the rivers burned and Lake Erie was polluted. And it's very important because we have 90%, oh, let me see, 80% of our bodies are water. And clean water is important for health, and so I'm very concerned about that. Thank you. Sorry about that.
No reason to be sorry. Thank you, Pamela, for the comment. And I, I do want to welcome caller 3, it looks like. Caller 3, do you mind identifying yourself?
It's Jan Mitchell.
Hi, Jan. Thank you for joining us. You've been having some trouble logging in.
Yeah, I'm having, and even I have technical support, but I'm still not able to log in.
Well, it sounds like you're not the only one this morning, so thank you for joining us by phone. Let me, let me put another call out just to check, do we have any other public comment or input at this time? Okay, hearing, hearing none. I will remind you, folks in the public, if you've been holding a comment, we've got another section at the end of the meeting today. You're welcome to make comments then as well. But let's leap into Goal 5. I do want to say at the outset, there was some discussion before this meeting with Nadia and myself and staff about the scheduling of a lunch break today. It was ultimately my suggestion, or you can blame me. You can blame me if this causes problems, but last meeting, we had some, some discussion that ended up around where we took a break and where we would come back, et cetera. I wanted to give us a little more flexibility, so I suggested that when we come to an opportune moment, anyone, member of the group can make a motion for us to recess for 30 minutes and have our lunch break. So that we should just leave the agenda open in the sense of not putting a lunch break schedule in there. And then if we hit a natural stopping point in the range of 12, 12:30, something like that, that someone from the, from this group make a motion at that time for us to recess for 30 minutes so that we can take our lunch break and come back wherever that item is that we've taken a break on. So I hope that that works out for us today. I just didn't want us to be stuck negotiating a lunch break again. So blame me if that goes awry. Okay, Goal 5 overview. Gail, would you like to give us the overview of what we're looking at today?
Yes, thank you. So Goal 5 covers a lot of different natural resources in the county that aren't covered under any of the other 18 goals. And so that would include things like riparian corridors, wetlands, which we have talked about significantly, the recreational trails, which are different and listed separately than those recreational amenities discussed in Goal 8. And it's more or less, I look at it as a hodgepodge of where everything was sort of put in that didn't get covered in one of these other goals. There are a lot of different Oregon administrative rules that spell out in great detail what gets listed in an inventory for each of these categories, and how you go about evaluating them to determine significance. When we undertook this Comprehensive Plan update, we were looking primarily for resources that hadn't been identified 40 years ago, but that at some point need to go through that inventory process and evaluation process so that we can determine whether or not they do have significance and should be included in an inventory. We're not asking for the committee or the Planning Commission to determine significance today, but to at least identify potential resources that we may want to look to in the future to determine their significance. As you go through the memo that staff put together for this, we did try to spell out what is included in the OAR, the Oregon Administrative Rules, and what we have included or not included. We've also listed the inventories that are currently, have been identified back when the plan was originally adopted. And we've included in the policies recommendations the new sites that have been identified through the Citizen Advisory Committee meetings and public input. I don't want to go too far into a summary right now because I know we have a lot of material to cover. But I open at this point just for some general questions about Goal 5 and the process. And otherwise, I'd prefer that we spend our time looking at each of the resources listed.
Do we have questions from the group or comments? So I saw a hand from Cheryl. Cheryl?
Gail, I'm remembering in previous meetings that there was a wetlands inventory in progress that was being put together by Crest. And at that point, I think this was before we did our pause, there was talk of Crest doing a presentation. So I'm wondering where we are in that.
Yeah, so before the pause, there was talk of doing a presentation, and we are still reviewing the draft that Crest put together, we being staff. And so in the haste to restart our process and with our condensed timeline, we have not scheduled a new workshop with Crest to discuss that draft that they've prepared. So there is nothing scheduled at this time.
Any other questions about materials or process today? Jan Mitchell?
Just back to Cheryl's question, wetlands is such an important issue in this county. I'm wondering if we could not find a way to schedule that presentation.
We would have a very brief time period. The schedule that the board has approved has us reviewing Goal 5 today, and then it will be going to the Planning Commission on November 9th for their review, for a recommendation to the board. So we would have to schedule that within the next seven days or so in order to complete that before the Planning Commission meeting on November 9th.
So the answer is no, basically.
We can certainly ask Crest if they're prepared to do that. I know that staff hasn't completed their review of the draft, but we can certainly make time to do that, and I can reach out to Crest and see if we can do that.
Any other questions from the group? Jim Allegria?
Is, is it possible to review the draft that Crest produced?
At this point, I would like staff to at least have the opportunity to look through the draft before we release it out to the public. I'm sure it's a public document, so we can certainly, I'll ask council if it's okay to release it.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the group? Nadia, did you come up?
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just looking through the document again here, Director Hendrickson. And could you, I'm sorry, I might be a little confused here, but the, I'm just looking at the Goal 5 resource inventory as it lines up with the topic areas, and I'm wondering why, well, like, for example, And I'm wondering why, well, like, for example, like, it starts with open space and doesn't start with riparian areas. In fact, riparian areas isn't even listed as a topic. How come they don't line up?
Sure, I understand your question. So are you saying they don't line up with the way I've listed them on the agenda?
No, in actual, so I'm looking at the charts on page nine and 10, the Goal Five resource inventory. And it starts with open space and then mineral and then energy sources. And it goes through, and then in the current conditions and the way that the rest of the document is lined up, it starts with riparian corridors. I don't even see riparian corridors in the inventory.
Correct. And that's because they aren't addressed in our current Goal Five. So we have no adopted resource inventories for riparian corridors. So there was nothing to put on the table. We can certainly rearrange the table. However, the committee and the planning commission would prefer, whether that's alphabetically or what you view to be in order of importance. There's no penalty for how the table is arranged. So there's no legal requirement that it be discussed in a certain order. This was how, when we initially began our discussions of Goal Five, that we put our table together, pulling out the inventoried resources from the comprehensive plan. So there is not anything in stone that says it has to remain in this order. And it wasn't done to be confusing. I simply did not rearrange the table and take the time before I put our Goal Five together to make sure that everything matched. So if there is confusion, I do apologize for that. And I can make sure that we revise that before we go to the planning commission.
Thank you for answering that question. Yeah, I just was making, I wasn't sure if I was confused or I think it would make sense to just line them up so that we can see like right up front, riparian corridors missing out of compliance, for example. You know, it's just so we can then line those up with those sections that are following. Thank you.
Nadia, any other questions or comments from the group about our process today or contents that we're looking at? Gail, I guess I have one, one question, which is, so we've got a variety of materials in the packet today. One, one of the items, so we've got a draft, as, as I understand it, we've got a draft for Goal Five. And then separately, we have a draft with, that's marked up from a meeting with a county commissioner. Do you, do you want feedback on both of those documents? Should we concentrate on one or the other? What, what is your intention for, for what you need feedback from this group on?
So staff has provided the commissioner comments, just so that you are aware of them. And at the discretion of the planning commission and the Citizen Advisory Committee members, you can determine how best to, to work those in, if you decide to, into the draft of Goal Five. My preference would be that we focus on the draft of Goal Five itself so that we can work through especially the policy areas. And then, of course, if there's any concerns or corrections or additions that we want to make to the background narrative as well, that's included within that.
Should it be our understanding that the changes that are marked up in that document will go forward? Or that, or that the document draft provided in the front space would be what we should be working off of?
Yeah, so the, this draft here would be where I would request that the committee and the planning commission work today. Again, I've provided Commissioner Banks' comments so that you're aware of what her concerns are and that however the board, the planning commission and the Citizen Advisory Committee members choose or not, or choose not to incorporate those comments into this draft, then we'll make those changes before the planning commission meeting.
Thank you, Gail. Okay, I'll just check one more time. Any, any other comments or questions before we get started? Okay, well, then let's, let's dive in. So we've got, we do have the document. Hopefully everyone has it independently in front of you too. But if, if not, Gail has got at least the, the beginning portion of it up on screen for us. I, I don't know that I have strict guidance for you as a group today as far as how we go through. We do have an agenda order, which is to review the draft policies and have board discussion, and that is starting with riparian corridors. The agenda is itemized, so it, it seems sensible that we would sort of follow that order. Though I will say that this introduction section overview, the different perspectives, et cetera. We, we might want to have comments on that before we get into riparian corridors. So are, are there comments on, on the section that's on the screen in front of us? Not limited to the overview, but comments for the introductory section. Gail?
Chair Davis, I also forgot to mention that earlier this morning, I had forwarded comments to the planning commission and the Citizen Advisory Committee members from Jim Allegria and Nadia Gardner. And I do have those available. If anybody, we need to pull them up on the screen as well.
Thank, thank you for pointing that out, Gail, and, and for distributing those this morning. So, so any, any comments or questions from the group about the introductory material? Nadia, I see your hand up.
So just a process question then. So my suggestion that we organize, that the staff reorganize pages nine through 13 table. And do you, chair, believe that we need to make a motion in a second in order to do that? Or can we just suggest that staff do that?
All right. Personally, I, I take that as a sort of Scrivener's error kind of thing. Ordering of a table doesn't, doesn't seem to me like a, a big issue of dispute necessarily. I think it's a reasonable thing. Gail, do, do you think we can order the table to match the order of the rest of the, the chapter or the goal?
Yes, I've already noted it. But if it makes everyone feel more comfortable, then you can do a motion.
I, I think I'm satisfied with that, if you are, Gail. Okay. And Nadia is giving thumbs up, so I think we're, we're, we're good on that front. Any, any other comments on, on the introductory section? I'm not seeing any, so perhaps, Gail, we could move ahead to, do we want to talk the inventory quickly? Does, does anyone have comments, additions, deletions for the inventory outside of Nadia's suggestion about reordering to match the rest of the goal? Any, any other comments or questions or deletions, insertions, anything like that? Charles, did you come off mute?
I did. I did come off. So as I, as I mentioned in the liaison, in the liaison report, there were some some resources that were overlooked 40 years ago, certainly in the Cold Beach area. And I'd like to see those added. And that would be Cold Beach Lake, Cedar Creek, and Mason Creek. So all three of those. I'm trying to think if there was anything else in, I'm just kind of scanning through the, the list of resources here. Just to see, oh, and wetland, of course, the wetlands. I didn't see any wetlands in the list. That would be in Arch Cape or Cold Beach. And yet there's a local wetland inventory that was done a few years ago and, and subsequently adopted by DSL that does a pretty good job of defining local wetlands in both Arch Cape and Cold Beach that, that I would like to see added to the inventory. So I'll leave it there.
Gail?
Yes, so the inventory table is a list of inventories that have actually gone through the evaluation process. This is what's already adopted. So we wouldn't be making changes to this table. What I would recommend is that when we get to water resources and when we talk about the wetlands in Goal Five, that we make a recommendation that those be evaluated in the future to determine their significance. And then if they are determined to be significant, they be added to the inventory. But again, we won't be adding things necessarily to the inventory today because we've not done that evaluation yet.
Charles, does that, does that satisfy?
I, I certainly hear what Gail's saying, and, and perhaps I understand what she's saying. My, my concern is that, you know, I don't want to come out of the process and, and have it turn out that the, the listed inventories are, are, in the updated plan are going to be just the historical ones that were in the plan. So in other words, if, if we need to go through a process, then great. I, I can understand why there would need to be a process to evaluate the recommendations. But I would like to have a commitment to do that, that comes out of this update rather than, than just say, oh, yeah, it ought to be done, and then it never gets done.
So, so Charles, I, I hear you on that comment. I, I put down a note to come back to this when we get to the wetland section, so that if the group wants to insert a recommendation that we do inventories of those resources, that we get that in there. If I forget that or overlook that, could, could you or other folks that live in your area like Nadia bring that up so that we, we try to revisit this when we get to that wetland section?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. And any other comments from the group on the inventory section itself?
So, at the risk of, at the risk of dragging this out. So I, I also mentioned some watersheds that got overlooked. I don't know. I'm kind of curious as to whether the watersheds have to go through some evaluation process. I mean, it would seem like if, if it's a defined watershed by the state of Oregon and WRD has a defined watershed. And they just got overlooked. They just got overlooked. I, I don't, I don't know what kind of, maybe Gail can educate me on what kind of a process they would have to go through to add them to the list of watersheds.
Gail, do you have, do you have any feedback on that particular question?
I'm looking up the OAR now, but it'll take me a minute. So if you want to move on, I can come back to the group with that information.
Sure. So, so I'll poll once again. Any, any other comments or questions about the inventory section itself? Okay, I'm not, I'm not seeing any for that. So I think the next section that's not just part of the introduction. Let me see, is we're looking, any comments on the current conditions that's following the inventory? But any comments on the current conditions section that, it is rather long this time. Nadia?
So we're starting here with riparian corridors. I'm hoping that this might be a good opportunity to just talk about the differences to approaches. So staff is indicating that Clatseton County is likely out of compliance, not having an inventory of our riparian corridors. And I'll say, I've personally been frustrated by this for many years, that even historically, the streams were not available on our Clatseton County web map. So staff, as soon as I pointed it out, added it. And, and of course, when you go to buy a property, it's nice to know if there's a river running through it. So for a lot of reasons, it's important for us to know where rivers and streams are in our county. So it, it sounds like we're out of compliance. We need an inventory. And there's a couple different approaches to doing that. I think historically, the way I've heard it, staff has suggested that safe, safe harbor is potentially the most efficient way of getting to that. But when it was brought up to the county commissioners in their couple work sessions around this topic, they had suggested that that is not a fine enough inventory to be as accurate as they, in their experience. And, and I'll say some of them come from a city experience, so you have a much more limited geographic area. But I'd like to hear from staff a bit on this topic. Like, what are the differences on, in the two approaches? And like, what are the cost and the time and the labor differences? Like, why, why one over the other? And, and also, so there's also been discussions about accuracy around both wetland and riparian resources, so streams, rivers, and wetlands. And my understanding is, isn't it the case that if a landowner disagrees with any of, in the, in any of the inventories, whether it be, well, or is going to develop property, they have to get an, a wetland delineation anyway. So it would make sure that it had the, the, the detail that was necessary to really understand where the resources are on those properties. So I guess that's two questions. One is around the process to inventory and the other is around, you know, what are the recourse that landowners have if, if they feel like whatever inventory has happened feels not quite accurate to them?
Okay, so to address your questions and hold on here. So this is the Oregon administrative rule that talks about riparian corridors. And I, I know it's very small print. But basically what it says is "Local governments shall inventory and determine significant riparian corridors by following either the safe harbor methodology in Section Five" or the standard inventory process described in OAR 660 2330. So when you follow the standard procedure, we have to collect as a local government information regarding all water areas, fish habitat, riparian areas, and wetlands within riparian corridors. Let's see, and when we're doing that, we have to at a minimum consult the following sources, which would be the Department of Forestry Stream Classification Map, USGS quadrangle maps, National Wetland Inventory Maps, Department of Fish and Wildlife Maps indicating fish habitat, FEMA flood maps, and aerial photographs. So those would be at a minimum, the sources we would use to determine riparian corridors. If we went with a safe harbor approach, what we're looking at then is a mandatory rule that spells out setback requirements depending upon the flow of the lake or stream that's being documented. So if your flow is greater than 1,000 cubic feet per second, you would have an automatic 75-foot upland buffer from the top of each bank, and then it works its way down through there. For those who want to look it up, I will put the email or the website in the chat box. Maybe. But that would be what we would go through. In terms of pricing this out, I have not conducted any price estimates as to what that would cost or how much staff time would be involved. We've only begun this discussion and that's the information I have at this point. And I'm sorry, I'm trying to run the meeting, put stuff in the chat and talk about all this. So if I sound a little discombobulated, it's because I'm trying to do three or four things at once. And I apologize.
Thank, thank you for putting the link in the chat, Gail. I can't say that I thought you were sounding discombobulated there. I, I might ask. Do you have, do you have a sense? I, I get that you wouldn't have this budgeted out yet or anything. Do you have a sense of, of what is the, what is the bigger burden for staff in terms of these two options? Or, or what provides better data, frankly, for the county between the two?
I mean, likely what staff would recommend is that we would have to budget this for another fiscal year and hire this out because we would not have the staff capacity to conduct this in-house and complete this process. So, and then it's really a discussion for the community to have about how they want to approach this and what they want their environmental protections to be. So the, probably the easiest way is to do the safe harbor. But it may not be what the community is looking for. And that's a discussion that the community has to have. But it may not be what the community is looking for, and that's the discussion that the community has to have.
Okay, thank you, Gail.
Sorry, just to follow up. So I heard what the safe harbor is, but I didn't hear what the standard inventory is. So a standard inventory would be more fine-grained, is that right? And then it would, it would set different buffers, like specific to, so say it's on Cedar Creek, and we know Cedar Creek in Falcon Cove is a drinking water source creek. I'm making this up, Charles. And so because of that, we think that 75-feet buffers make sense. Where Nathan Creek is not drinking water, so it's 25 or something like that. So it's more fine-grained in that way, is that right?
Right, so within the, if you're doing a standard inventory, the state rules spell out which sources at a minimum you have to utilize. From there, it becomes a community discussion and not mandated by state rules about what your buffer requirements will be, if anything, and which riparian areas you have identified as significant. So that, everything is going to be a community discussion. There's less community discussion if you go with safe harbor because it's spelled out in the administrative rules. And it is more fine-grained if you do a standard inventory. It will take you probably longer to do a standard inventory because there's a lot more work that may go into that beyond just your minimum resources. And also then that community dialogue that has to occur in terms of what protections, if any, the community wants to have around those resources.
So could you start with safe harbor and then move into community in maybe areas that were particularly focused, like? Or do counties tend to just be like one or the other and do the whole thing?
I've not conducted an inventory of what every county is doing in the state, so I can't answer the latter part of your question. The former part, though, would be, from everything that I understand at this point in time, would be yes, you could start with one approach and then tailor it for additional areas as they rose in prominence in terms of concern for protection?
Jim?
Well, I'd like to state upfront, I'm not a hydrology expert, but having worked 20 years in Oregon with the U S Forest Service and the Bureau of Land Management, they both had funded significantly with the Dogami, the Department of Geological something or other here in the state to do LiDAR mapping for the state. And the LiDAR mapping is very detailed. The stream layout is a modeled approach, which means that it is actually very good most of the time, but it's not 100% accurate simply because of the lay of the land can change exactly where that stream is estimated to be. After saying that, I do like, and I believe there had been some discussions when this came up before the C A C of having a safe harbor approach, which is really a modeling approach of buffering something like this hydrological layer that the state maintains. But it should not be taken for 100% accurate. So maybe a hybrid approach, I think, would be very valuable, especially for even the private sector to have an idea of what's out there before having to invest in expensive riparian surveys with a qualified wetland expert. And a combination of the two would serve the county well because it's a lot faster to do the buffering according to certain guidelines than it is to actually go out there and do the survey in the field. But the survey in a field should be final word when it comes to specific parcels of land.
Any other comments, responses, thoughts about this section? Jan Mitchell?
I'm just wondering if the suggestion that we, that we do a modified approach needs to have a vote if we need to take, take any action on that in terms of making a recommendation?
So Gail, for this group to understand what's going forward right now, should it be our understanding that what's essentially on screen or what's in the draft document as provided is going forward right now? That we only need to make a recommendation if we want it changed? Or should we give feedback if we agree with the language, et cetera?
Okay, so the current conditions describes what, where we are today. So if there's not a disagreement that this is where we are today, I don't see the necessity to change this language. Where you would want to focus your attention then would be at the end of the document where we have our policies and recommendations theoretically. And there are some, staff did prepare, and some of the groups did talk about riparian recommendations. And so we would want to go through those. I can't remember what we put in here at this point. If we did make a recommendation, I don't think we made a recommendation one way or the other about standard inventory or safe harbor approach. But that would be where you would want to make a recommendation.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Gail. Any other comments or questions? Let's just stay with the riparian section, riparian corridor section of current conditions. Any other comments or questions about that? Yeah, or Nadia?
Sorry, I'm following up with my second question, which I'm realizing I didn't get, I don't think I got an answer to, which was around. So for both wetlands and riparian areas, if there is an inventory, an adopted inventory, and a landowner is going to develop a site, do they also, does it require that they do a delineation? Or could they opt to do a delineation if they disagree with the, with the scale, the current on-the-ground reality?
So I know that with regard to designation of historic resources, there is an opt-out. I didn't immediately see that language in terms of riparian corridors or wetlands. So I would have to verify that before I answer your question.
I'm sorry, what's an opt-out?
Opt-out, where if we want to designate someone's property as a historic site, they have the opportunity to opt-out and say, no, I don't want to?
Well, I'm just talking about, so like, so we do a riparian, so we know there's, we have an inventory of streams and wetlands, say in Arch Cape, and then a landowner wants to develop a site. When they develop that site, don't they have to do a wetland delineation? So it will be the most accurate theoretically? That might be more accurate than the statewide inventory or an adopted local wetland inventory and a riparian inventory?
Yeah, the county does not require delineations. The department that would require a delineation would be Department of State Lands. When we receive an application for development on a property that under the statewide wetlands inventory may have wetlands on it or through a local inventory may have wetlands on it, we're required to send a notice to Department of State Lands, and then they conduct a more thorough review and then make a recommendation as to whether or not a delineation is required.
And so that's for wetlands, but not for riparian?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this section on riparian corridor? Let's skip ahead, which I think is just a page forward for wetlands resources, just to check if there's any comments for wetland resources in this section. Okay, hearing none. Let's go to wildlife habitat. Any comments on this section's wildlife habitat? Nadia?
All right, I have a question on wetlands too. So because I wasn't participating in the last meetings, I just had a question around the Clatseton Plains report. So that report, which was originally done in 1883 and is now being updated, I understand, from CREST, is that actually going to be a local wetland inventory or is it something different?
I hadn't thought of it as a local wetland inventory. I suppose that it could be adopted as such. And that would be something the board would need to review and approve.
Is it being done with that process, like identifying standing water and soils and hydro soils and vegetation?
So it does cover that because it's an update of the Duncan Thomas Report. But again, we hadn't looked at it as staff as having that work done in order to adopt it as a local wetland inventory. It was more to identify and update the wetlands that had already been identified as significant. And then we asked CREST to also identify potential other significant wetland areas. And again, that hasn't, that review hasn't been completed by staff. So I don't have all the answers to all your questions on that draft report at this time.
And it's only for Clatseton Plains, so the other significant wetlands? Or is it throughout the county, other significant wetlands?
So it updates the Duncan Thomas Report, and the Duncan Thomas Report was primarily centered on the Clatseton Plains area.
Okay, any other questions on wetland resources? Okay, let's, let's check again for wildlife habitat. Okay, I'm not seeing hands or anything for the wildlife habitat section, which is a significant section in terms of length there. But okay, groundwater resources. Any comments or questions on groundwater resources? Charles?
Andy? Yeah. Sorry, I was delayed getting my mic connected. So we had a long discussion in our CAC about wildlife, especially in our part of the world. And I, my impression was that there is not an already defined wildlife habitat area, then, then there wouldn't be any any consideration for wildlife as an example in the southwest planning area, which, which seems a little strange to me. I mean, I know there's a wildlife preserve out around Jewel, and there's some, as I understand it, some predefined or defined wildlife corridors where the delta moved from point A to point B. But that's about the only place that seems to have an actual wildlife corridor established. So I'm trying to figure out whether this wildlife habitat thing really applies to other areas where there is not already a wildlife preserve or wildlife corridor identified.
Gail, do you have any feedback for that question? About the applicability of this section?
So when the plan was originally adopted, we primarily focused our wildlife habitat on O D F W's Big Game Habitat, which looked at areas where it was major big game, where there was little development and more habitat and more likelihood that you would encounter big game. And then there were peripheral areas which were occurred where more development had intruded into the wildlife habitat area. That obviously doesn't take into account where wildlife wander because the wildlife don't read our maps and they don't adhere to the boundaries that we've established on those maps. So we do have the ability, if we have identified corridors, to put in and address those corridors. But again, that's a process that we would go through, through an inventory process and evaluation to determine their significance. So it's not, it's, and specifically addressed Charles' question. It's not just limited to where there is an actual wildlife preserve like there is out in Jewel.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on the wildlife section? I just want to note and welcome Lisa Phipps from D L C D. Thanks for joining us again today, Lisa. Okay, so groundwater resources. Any comments, questions on the groundwater resources, current conditions section? Nadia?
Well, just to start out, one of the funny things for me about this section is in the requirement is that it's groundwater. And though part of our county relies on groundwater for drinking water, a large part of our county, actually probably most people in our county rely on surface water. And of course, the two are linked. But it's just an important characteristic, I feel like, of our area that there are wells, but there are a lot of, our water districts get our water from surface water, which is particularly vulnerable to surface water pollution, of course, as is groundwater, but in a different way. So I just note that. But one thing that was a, as an environmental scientist, a little puzzling to me was, you know, this is really, I think, supposed to be about drinking water. So not about wildlife habitat or all the other things that have to do with just water resources, whether it be surface or ground. And it starts with this definition of groundwater, and then the second paragraph talks about, you know, what a watershed is, and then it just launches into drinking water. And and then, so I feel like there needs to be some kind of cleanup of the language around that. But really, this is a section about, you know, focused on the health of our ground and surface water for drinking water. And then when talking about and depicting watersheds, it really should be focused on drinking water watersheds. The map on page 17 or 23 in the packet is a map of actually the watershed councils, which is not a map of the watersheds of our county. And then also, it's these, kind of these, there's different scales for watersheds. So there's like, I think, fifth field, fourth field, third field, depending on the details. So like, within the Youngs River watershed, the much larger watershed, of course, you have Lewis and Clark, and you have all these other smaller creeks that each have their own drainage basins, right? And so, but what matters in this section is where people are getting their water. And, and so maybe, you know, talking better about that and then actually, you know, focusing the maps on, I mean, you could do a larger, like, maybe, you know, use CREST to do like, what, what are the fifth field or the larger field? Just to depict like the major watersheds in our county, but then really focus this section on specifically what drinking water districts are getting and associations are where they're getting their water. Of course, you know, Falcon Cove is getting mirrors from a particular arch cape. Carnahan, one street in Arch Cape is getting water from a completely different watershed. So you're not going to be able to show all of this, though I think the table is a start of it. But anyway, I just think that needs to be really clear in this section. You know, what you're talking about, why, and how it's depicted. So I would suggest staff look again at this section and you know, just try to be clear about those, those different issues. And I think this is a good part, too, to just, you know, talk about again how so many people in the rural areas of our county are relying on individual water systems. And so, you know, really noting that clearly that, you know, these are the And so, you know, really noting that clearly that, you know, these are the, you know, probably most people in the county are relying on these, these water districts, but there's still a lot of people on very vulnerable individual systems. And and those people, I really worry will get lost in the wash. And, and you know, if you look at some of those communities, they're the most vulnerable of our people. So it's really important that we're paying attention and making sure that they are safe into the future and have water at all. You know, out on twenty-six, I know a lot of people, and fifty-three, a lot of people do not have water in the summertime already. And with climate change, that's only going to get worse. So, you know, I think our, our goal with these sections are really to make sure that everybody in our county have clean and abundant drinking water into the future. And if they don't, figure out some solution.
All right, I was muted. Gail, do you have any staff comment for any of that?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay. Any, any other questions or comments on the groundwater resource section? Let's start with Lam and then Jim.
Yeah, I guess this is kind of connected to it. One thing that really concerned me a lot is how county maintain roads. There's a lot of spraying. I know when the vegetations are growing along the roads and that oftentimes get washed into a watershed. I, I know there are different solutions to this process. I don't know if any or how do we try to make any connections with, with that? Because I drive along this, there's few properties that put up signs that they will maintain their own part of the road that is public. And there's very few of it. And the rest gets spray. And as you go along in the summertime, you can really tell what different properties have, have been sprayed. And I mean, as along in front of my property, as you know, we'd often walk along that and it smells. I mean, you could really pick up the smell pretty intensely. That's one of my great concerns there that goes into the watershed.
Thank you. Gail, just checking, any staff comment for that?
No, sir.
Okay. Jim?
Thank you, Andy. Seems to me this section has, should focus on three major points. The first is a, a long-term monitoring strategy with DEQ. Much of this section that was, that's in there now was based on a on a state groundwater study that was done back in nineteen, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. And it had some good recommendations and, and that's, that's what we tried to capture in this section. But it also noted that it was not a complete survey of the county. So in other words, there were still some holes from a design perspective. I think that that should be a major focus is long-term monitoring. And that would, that would address, that would address the water table issue as well as any pollutants in the groundwater. The second would be conservation measures to to inform the public. And actually, there were some common sense approaches that we actually put into the policy section to, to conserve water. And for instance, native plants in your yard, a landscaping, so that you don't need to have, you know, green lawn all the time, especially in the summertime. The third is, we have, that study showed that there are sections, primarily the class of plains area, but there are some other scattered wells that showed some, a high level of pollutants either exceeding the state standards or high enough so that it should be of concern. And that, and, and so the public awareness comes in to let people know that these are some potential issues. So I'm, I, it would be good if we could phrase the introduction section to emphasize those three areas. And that would fit very neatly with the policy statements that, that we originally, that, that we have in the draft document. That's, Andy, that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Gail, any, any response or thoughts about that?
No, thank you.
Okay. Okay, well, just poll again. Any, any other comments, questions about the groundwater resources section of the current conditions? Gail, this is very much a Scrivener's thing, so I hesitate to bring it up in this and open that door. But I think it's between page twenty-three and twenty-four in my document, the font size changes. And after which it becomes more difficult to read. I think it's probably because the chart needed to fit. But I just appreciated the larger font in previous pages in the document because I tend to read it at full page view.
Thank you. We'll correct that in our future draft.
Okay, thank you. So the next section.
Andy, can I just get a clarification? Are you open for public question and comment at this time? Or did we decide to hold off till the end of the meeting?
Chad, thank you for the question. I think if, if the body is, is willing to take public comment at this time, I'm, I'm happy to do that. I just want to give them the option so that if we feel like we're crunched for time, we can keep moving and take public comment at the end. But if you have a comment now, is there any objection from the group for taking public comment at this time? Any objections? Okay, Chad, if you, if you want to speak up, go for it.
Okay, I don't have too many. I just have a couple that I've written down. One is when you're examining the potential for wildlife corridors, the Forest Service has a vegetation software that models the growth. It now includes a section where you can model elk habitat and the quality of it. So if you are looking at installing or designating wildlife corridors, there are some tools out there that might help you prioritize them based on the quality habitat they could provide. Regarding the county roadside spraying, I think it'd be helpful to have someone from the county describe what protections and precautions they, they do have in place so that we have a better understanding what they're doing. Because I think a little education would help all of us understand that. That's all I have for now, but knowing that it's available to make comment and questions during the meeting is helpful. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Jan, did I see a hand from you briefly there?
I just put it, I just put it in a comment to everybody. I'm wondering, I appreciate what both Nadia and I guess can you hear me?
Yeah.
I appreciate what they have offered, and I'm just wondering how we make it a group recommendation. It just doesn't get passed over.
So I think that's a valid question. I think that in, in most of this process, I've encouraged the group. If, if we as a body want to make a specific recommendation, like putting three topical points of emphasis in that we should make a motion to that, to that extent that we say positively, hey, we want this in the document. So for example, if Nadia or Jim has language, specific language that they, they want to see in the document, I think they should make a motion to, or, and I think often it's nice to put it in chat so that we know exactly what we're talking about. But I would encourage that other, you know, otherwise I would anticipate, you know, Gail taking comments and incorporating them as best she can. But if you want to put more of your stamp on it, I would encourage that process of just making a motion to do something.
I'll just do a simple motion on that, that I, and so my letter that I sent to Gail, and that was sent out this morning. I said, under groundwater resources on page nineteen, I moved that after discussion of the organized districts at a section talking about households that are on individual and small group systems.
Do you mind, do you mind putting that in chat quickly, quickly, or Nadia?
Yeah, should gonna challenge my typing skills here.
Okay, well, we'll pause for a second. No problem.
Andy, I've got a question around that. With the single and small group systems, it was mentioned that they're the most vulnerable. And I would just like some clarification on, you know, vulnerable to what? What is the, the threat to them?
Okay.
Yeah, I would just say that they're vulnerable to, they're not, you know, they're not under the same requirements as formal water districts, first of all. So they're not, in my, I'm not on one, thank goodness. But in my experiences with some of the people here between Arch Cape and Cannon Beach, they are just individually maintaining systems coming off different kinds of resource lands. And they they are not testing their water, for example, in a way that, you know, the Arch Cape Water District would. And, and they're not necessarily paying attention to all the potential things that are happening. And so, you know, all of a sudden something changes and they just see the consequences. Where I think our water districts are very proactive about communicating with all the, all the resource lands around their intakes, for example, and, and, and working cooperatively with them. I think those individual groups, sometimes it just, it catches them at unaware, at unawares. And so, you know, that, that's just one little example. But, you know, I think there's a lot of rules around having a water district. And so they're, they're really paying attention and proactive where those little individual ones are not necessarily. And they don't have the expertise on, you know, they don't have staff. So they don't have the expertise. And they might have a contractor that helps them maintain those systems, depending on how sophisticated they are. But they're not. So yeah, that's, that was, those are my thoughts on that.
Thanks, Nadia. I'm not sure that fully answers the question as to what they are vulnerable to. It just outlines the fact that they aren't tested as often. But no clarity on what those tests are for, or what is putting them at threat, or what they're vulnerable to.
Right? So some of them might be vulnerable to cow poop in their water, you know? So it's, it's, you know, drinking water can be, it could be hot water causing algal outbreaks. You know, they're having that more and more be an issue, especially in the valley. It can be, it can be forest land impacts. It can be sediment coming off of roads. It can be roadside spraying by the county. So it just depends on, you know, where it is. But to me, what makes them vulnerable, the most vulnerable is not having that, you know, the, the structure and the staff to, to keep an eye out for potential problems. And so.
Okay, so.
Hi, this is Pam Birmingham. May I interject?
Any objection from the group for, for taking a comment from Pam?
Andy, I would give you a second to the motion so that we can go to discussion and then Pam could hop in there.
Okay, thanks, Cheryl. Pam, I don't hear any objection, so go for it.
Okay, just quickly, I have a registered shallow well and I'm individual water system. And because it's a shallow well, it is not classified under the Forest Practices Act as a domestic or a type D stream. So when the land was next door to me, where the water came from was harvested, it was not given any protection. And therefore I lost my water system and I lived for a couple of years without any running water until I could get a well established. And the operator, everybody did everything according to the rules. It was just the classification wasn't there to offer protection. So that's a way, an individual system is vulnerable. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment, Pam. So we've got a motion on the table. Gail, thank you for, for capturing it on screen for us too. So the motion as recorded by, by chat and then relayed by Gail here is that after this, so this is just locationally, after discussion of the formal districts, add a section talking about all the households that are on individual and small group systems. Nadia, this just point for discussion here. Do you want to clarify what talking about means in this context? Like what, what sort of commentary do we want from, from staff here? That's pretty open-ended in my mind.
Yeah, I mean, I leave that to staff. I mean, I'm just looking for facts, not, you know, my, you know, I mean, I feel like it is a fact that they're, that they can be more vulnerable. But I don't mean to, to start a you know, debate over that in this motion. It's just that I feel like in this section, which is simply informational, we should note that fact that not everybody is covered by what is discussed previously, which is surface water districts and groundwater districts. Those are very formal versus.
Your intent here is more recognizing the existence of these different groundwater dependent systems.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. So let's go to discussion of the motion. So we've got a motion to add this section talking about households on individual and small group systems. Any discussion of that motion? Charles? Yeah, Charles?
So yeah, I'm right there with Nadia. I mean, in my eyes, making note of the fact that there are other private community organizations that supply drinking water to some number of households, I think is, is important. And to the extent that, that it's possible to show them either in the table or on the county's mapping system, I think that would be a great idea. Certainly, all the water districts, I'm sure, official water districts like Fountain Cove Beach Water District can provide, you know, a, a map of our watershed. But I think the other systems could also, would also have some degree of knowledge about where their watersheds are. And they certainly have a good degree of knowledge about where their source intakes are, which, again, the county really should know about, especially if it's close to a road from a spraying standpoint.
Okay, thank you for that discussion, Charles. Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, I'm not seeing further discussion here. Let me, let me try to go around the room just for, I'll, I'll take a vote here. Let's make it voice vote quickly. So I'll just go around the room and ask for your vote, yea or nay, so that we don't have to do around the room twice. So I'll do it in the order that I see folks on my screen. So the motion is to restate, this is just to add a section talking about all house, or talking about all households that are on individual and small group systems to acknowledge them within that, within the report. So the first voter I see on my screen is Carrie Johnson. Carrie Johnson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, Jim Legria, how do you vote?
Yea.
Robert Strickland, how do you vote?
Yea.
Thank you. Cheryl Johnson, how do you, oh, excuse me. Charles Dice, how do you vote?
Yea.
Cheryl Johnson, how do you vote?
Yea.
Yay.
Thank you. Pat Corcoran, how do you vote?
Yay.
Thank you. Nadia Gardner, how do you vote?
Yay.
John Orr, how do you vote? I'll come back for John. Juan, how do you vote?
Yay.
Uh, Jane Mitchell, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. I think that's all the voters that I see. Have I missed anyone outside of John Orr who is a voting member? Okay, so I, by my count, I have seven ayes, no nays, and one abstention from John Orr. So I believe the ayes have it. Uh, thank you for the discussion and, and the motion there, Nadia. Jim, I see in chat, I, I'm gonna suggest we take that up when we get to the policies section. Totally, totally valid for us to take a affirmative vote on that, but I think we should do it when we get to policies.
Yeah, no, that, that's fine, Andy.
And then Cheryl is just suggesting that, that we have a long way to go and to be mindful of that today. Any, let me, let me poll the group one more time, any other comments, motions, suggestions on the groundwater resources? Current conditions section. Robert?
If I may, Andy, I would like to say that if there's any way for the county to help encourage people that are on those single user water sources, if they could help them get registered. It is much easier to offer protections around water sources that you know about. The ones that you don't know about are much harder to protect.
Thank you for the suggestion, Chad. Uh, Robert Strickland?
Did, did John happen to mention why he abstained?
Uh, he did not, he just did not vote and I, I recorded that as abstention. He's here for the meeting, but he didn't raise his voice at the vote. Thank you. Okay, um, so let's, let's talk next about. State scenic waterways. Gail, again, this is, this is very much Scrivener's, but I think the, the goal itself lists it as state scenic waterways. Even though obviously the state is Oregon, I, I might suggest changing the title there, just so that it's clear where it aligns. Any, any comments, questions, motions on state scenic waterways? Just pausing for a second in case there's some delayed comments coming in. But not hearing or seeing any hands, okay, we can move on to the next section. Federal wild and scenic rivers, short section. Any comments, questions about that? Okay, uh, Oregon recreational trails. Comments, questions, motions on that? Nadia?
Um, I guess, uh. The, I just noted that Akola Oswald Weston Port Stevens State Parks Trails were not included. In this section, I'm kind of sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm jumping forward to page twenty six, so never mind. You move that forward.
Okay.
It's under this topic, but not under this portion of the document.
Okay. And then, uh, natural areas. Comments, questions about natural areas? All right, um, let me move ahead then wilderness areas. Checking for comments and questions on wilderness areas. And the next one is the mineral and aggregate resources section. And, um, energy resources. Any comments or questions about the energy resources current conditions section? Nadia?
I just note that wave is not here and it's likely that we're going to have both offshore wave and wind in the next ten years. So that may, I think wind is most likely on the south coast, but it's possible we'll end up with wave up here, so I just note that for staff. And though it will be offshore, there's a lot of infrastructure onshore that ends up, you know, really impacting the county for those kinds of. Facilities.
Yeah.
Yeah, so when I listed energy sources, I listed the ones that are specifically called out in OAR as part of Goal Five. And that includes. Natural gas, surface water, solar and wind area. So those, that was why that was listed there. Just to be compliant with OAR.
And it looks like there'll be another section in Goal thirteen too, so maybe you can be more detailed than that.
Thank you for the clarification, Gail. On where that list is coming from. Uh, other, other questions or comments about the energy sources section? Uh, Robert?
Does title fit in there somewhere?
It sounds like not under the OAR anyway. And, and Nadia is indicating at least that we might want to take this up in the, in the goal that's more specific to, to energy. Pat?
And this may be a similar comment that will be picked up later. I know there are some devices that are, you know, offshore far enough not to be tsunami debris. At some point in the energy, especially with offshore, be careful not to put too many bobbing bits of metal in the area that can come ashore with the tsunami. Most of them are far, many of them are far enough away, but I think that's an important thing to acknowledge somewhere here and again in Goal Seven.
Okay. Pat, Pat, I would invite, invite you to take that up when we get to the policy section if, if you want to suggest some language there. Any other comments, questions for energy sources? Okay, let's ask about cultural areas. Any comments or questions about the cultural areas, current conditions section here? Charles, did you come off mute to make a comment?
I, I did, I, I don't want to get bogged down in this, but. The text says thirty thousand known archaeological sites. I know a lot of them are not in the public domain for obvious reasons. Sometimes the question I have is, okay, so a private landowner who wants to develop a piece of property, how are they supposed to know? Whether or not they've got a site on, on their property.
Gail, is it possible for you to address that?
Yeah, the, the best way, Charles, would be for the property owner to contact the state historic preservation office. We've also have when projects come in such as communication towers, those firms hire archaeological consultants who actually do that background work and work with state historic preservation office to prepare a report. Identify any known sites and then that report's often submitted to SHPO to, for approvals, just like you would do with a delineation for wetlands and DSL.
Thank you, Gail. Any, any objection to taking public comment from Lisa Phipps? Okay, hearing none. Lisa, I saw your hand just a second ago.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I just put it in the chat chair. Just letting folks know that there may be some changes to the rules around cultural areas coming up.
Do you, uh, is it possible for you to give us any insight about what kind of changes might be happening?
It, it is not possible, not because it's a secret, but because I've not been looped into that. I am just aware that there have been extensive conversations working with the tribal communities to address what are deemed as some insufficiencies in, in the rule in terms of protections. And I, what I can do is get the timeline for that and just pass that along to Gail. Who can then pass it along to you all, just so that you know, if there are any details that are, you know, readily available, I can get those to you too.
Thank you, Lisa. Jan?
Lisa, I'm just wondering if you could let us know who is working on that? What state agency?
Uh, so I know that there are at least three and that it would be the Department of Land Conservation Development. SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Office and then. LCIS, that's a commission for the tribes. And so that they've been all collaborating on that. There may be others, those are the three that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the cultural areas section? Okay, uh, let's poll here historic resources. Anyone have questions or comments or motion for historic resources? Jan?
I'm sounding like a rusty wheel here, but we, we're Clatsop County. The traditional folks who lived here were Clatsop Nahalums and I, if we. And I'm not sure why the Chinook Nation is in there because they were across the river. And I'm just, if you're going to go into anything in this section that talks about how we may change things and you probably are safest to stay with the, with the recognized tribe and go through, go through them and let them decide who things we need to be referred to. I think, I know I, I spent a lot of time with getting, working toward getting a representative here. I think he ultimately decided that he felt not respected. And he's working locally, really more with Seaside, Seaside Historic Society and Cannon Beach. But the tribe is active, but just not, not politically, but active in trying to create a, a structure and a historic museum that talks about tribal matters. But I think if we're going to put anything in that we're, we're on safer ground to have the recognized federally recognized tribes arbitrate.
Thank you, Jan. Nadia?
Yeah, I also, this is the first time in this document that that comes up. I know there's been a lot of discussion within the committees and I apologize for not having been present for those. But I, I do feel uncomfortable with just naming the Chinook throughout the document. And I suggest, I actually disagree with Jan in that I think we do need to. Right the wrong of lack of recognition for two of our local tribes, both the Chinook and the Clatsop Nahalum. And, and not do what the state does, which is only acknowledge the recognized tribes. Especially since up north, we don't have a very strong presence of a recognized tribe, but we do have the Solets and we do have the Grand Ronde as well. The Grand Ronde at the south edge of the county, we've had some interaction with them down here. They, they have usual and accustomed lands identified to here. And then I think probably on the east side of the county as well, and then the Solets claim the entire coast. So unless we want to get into the. Well, I think it might be challenging not to get into the fray a bit with any of this, but. I suggest that we acknowledge throughout the document both unre, uh, tribes that are federally recognized as well as tribes that are not federally recognized in our area, including the Chinook, Clatsop Nahalum, Solets and Grand Ronde, but not excluding anyone else. So that, that's my suggestion that throughout this document that we. Shift our language to be more inclusive rather than exclusive.
I support that.
Thank you, Nadia. Gail, actually, so this is something that, that didn't rise to my awareness when, when I was reviewing the materials, but. I note now that the worksheet that's attached here is, I know the county wide took up this subject, this particular subject around. Recognition in two meetings and it looks like the worksheet is only a reference to the first meeting. And in fact, makes, makes a point that we're going to bring this subject back up in our future December meeting. So it looks like that material isn't part of the record here where we, we had further discussions with tribal representatives to try and come up with, with good language that we agreed on as a group. So I would just request that maybe especially when this moves up through the chain, that, that December meeting material also be included. Does that make sense as a request, Gail?
Yes, it does and we'll do that. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, any, any other questions, comments, motions on historic resources?
I have one, it's just that when they talk about the cannon at Cannon Beach. The cannons were found in Arch Cape and there is a cannon in Cannon Beach, but it's a replica and there's another cannon in Arch Cape. So I'm thinking that this might be the historic cannon wayside in Arch Cape, not Cannon Beach. Is that right, Gail?
My understanding is that it's the cannon that's been moved to the museum that was being referenced.
The actual cannon that they put it there. Oh, I see.
Okay, thank you, Gail. Thank you. Any, any other questions or comments for this historic section?
Do we need to do a motion around the tribal suggestions?
You're, you're welcome to make a motion around the tribal suggestions. I actually think that my recollection is that the language that's represented here is not, is not actually representative of what the county wide ended up settling on in the end anyway. I, I think that when we had the longer discussion. We ended up with a more narrow view. But if we want to make a motion here as a group to say, use the language that you suggest in chat, go for it, you know. It's, it's your call in the group. I'm not, I'm not at liberty to make motions or, or tell you what to do.
Yeah, the conclusion at the end of that December discussion was that we weren't going to call out or specify individual tribes or nations that we were just going to use the term Native American. There were.
So I've got, I've got a handful of, of people here. Not, Nadia is still considered to have the floor, but I think I've got Charles and then Jim next.
Yeah, if, if that is going to be the case, that it's just going to be Native American through the tribe, I don't, throughout the document and not. And we've, and we fix the, the other, other parts of the document that talks about the Chinook versus the other tribes, then I'm, I don't need to make a motion. But we might need to, I think once we get into policies, we might want to make sure.
Okay. Charles, did you have comment?
Uh, no, I had just left my mic on, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Jim?
I, I just want to acknowledge what Director Hendrickson said is that is exactly my recollection. Is once we, we got into this, we realized that it was quite complex and messy. And so we backed up, backed off to a more generic nomenclature.
Thanks, Jan. Okay, any other comments or questions on, on the historic resources section? Okay, let's go to next section, open space. Any questions or comments for open space current conditions? Okay, seeing none, how about scenic views and sites? Okay, not seeing anything there. So Nadia?
I would add, sorry, under scenic views and sites, it looks like the CAC, CACs have suggested additions. But I would also add the Akola, Oswald West, and Fort Stevens State Parks. All are within unincorporated Clatsop County and have significant trails, economic development. They're supporting economic development, the tourism industry, of course, and recreation industries. And great views.
Gail, do you know why those are excluded at the moment?
Probably because they were not brought up in any of our Citizen Advisory Committee meetings, so we can add that to the list.
And any objection from the group for adding tho, those sites? And Nadia, do you mind restating which sites you're talking about, just so that we can make sure we're on the same page here?
Oswald West State Park, Akola State Park, Fort Stevens State Park.
Okay. Any, any objection from the group for adding those sites to this inventory?
Okay, don't kill me. Two more, Arcadia and Hug Point State Recreation Areas as well.
A typo, they didn't mean Forest Stevens, but Fort Stevens.
I'm 13. Yeah, thank you, thank you, Robert. Any, any objection to adding those to the scenic views list here? Okay, thank you, Nadia. I think that's a useful change. Okay, so we've got a short section here on future conditions. I believe climate change is pretty much the extent of it. There are a couple of headings without content. I might ask for just clarification from Gail on, on what, what the intent is with those headings. But, but first, any, any comment on the climate change section? Okay, Gail, do you mind clarifying the, the headings there and what the intent, are you going to flush those out or?
Yeah, those will be flushed out, but because I'm one person working on this along with six other agendas, I just ran out of time before our deadline to get this agenda out. So I apologize for not having that completely flushed out at this point.
No, no need. Thank you for the clarification there. Okay, any, anything from the group about content that's strongly desired for, for those two headings?
Yeah, I do.
Charles?
So I, so I just want to underscore the importance of Gail's heading, at least, demand for housing and affordable housing. I think that's a, a really big issue for, you know, for the, for the near term as well as the long term. So I'm, I'm real supportive of a number of things that could fall under that heading.
Thank you, Charles. Yeah, I guess, just to make a comment, I know that I'm constrained a little bit as chair here, can't make a motion or anything. But, but I also think the, the housing study that the county contracted for, you know, I think one of the things that they bring forward is just an appropriate range of housing for all needs in the county is, you know, that there can be some housing that is relatively not affordable for most people in the county. That's okay. But there also needs to be some balance so that there's appropriate housing for people who can not afford the high-end stuff. So. Okay.
I'm just wondering why, I mean, of course, I'm, just like everyone else, very supportive of affordable housing. But I'm wondering why there would be a section in Goal Five about that.
Gail, any, any commentary on that?
Yeah, because in future conditions, we're looking at things that may affect these resources we've just been talking about. So when we think about items that may affect groundwater, that are going to affect scenic resources, wildlife habitat, what, what are those items? So these were three things that came to my head in my limited time. And certainly if there are other conditions or issues that the group would foresee happening over the 20-year planning horizon, we want to include those in there. Also, conversely, if the group feels that housing isn't a threat or an issue that might affect any of these resources, then we can take that out as well.
Obviously, population pressure is a pressure.
Thank you for clarifying, Gail, that this is mostly about interaction with the Goal Five resources in this particular instance. I think that's useful.
Yeah, and is there, I know Nadia brought up, but if the consensus of the group is that housing or any of these aren't an issue, then just, we should talk about that, so we take those out.
Well, let me, let me ask the group here, is, is there any objection from the group for these two headings being included in this Goal Five section?
Yeah, so I, this is Charles. I, I think it's really important because, I mean, I think everybody understands implicitly what's going to happen in terms of impacting things like wetlands and water resources from more development and more people. It, it's going to be a major impact on both of those things, as well as, I'm sure, some of the other ones that were mentioned.
Okay, thanks, Charles. So I'll just check again, is there any objection to including these two headings? Any objection from the group? So I'm not hearing any objection, Gail. I think you're, you're, you've got support for including these two items here. We'd encourage you to go ahead. Jim, did you have comment?
Not, not on that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other, any other comments or questions from the group before we move into objectives and policies? Before we move, okay, Jim?
In terms of future, future issues, I'd like to submit transportation congestion as a safety issue. Specifically in the summertime. That's, that's like the, the elephant in the room. People don't really want to talk about it. But at least I feel that it's, it's a major issue, not too sure what could be done about it. But at least have that included as a future issue, I think is appropriate.
Jim, can you maybe clarify even for my sake, how, how you're envisioning that interacting with the Goal Five resources? What, what kind of commentary that would entail?
Well, in terms of just, you know, future, future issues, I, I do think that that's, that's one that obviously should be included in transportation, but also just to bring it up as a topic here.
Andy, I might be able to add a little bit to Jim's comment there. As we address congestion by widening roads and taking roads from one lane to two lane, two lane to four lane, we need to be cautious of what we're giving up for that expansion. Is that kind of where you're going with that, Jim?
Yes, yes, and, and just purely from a, a, a safety issue as well. Getting, getting emergency vehicles to the right place, not only to the scene, but also to, say, the hospitals or helicopter pads or whatever.
Any objection from the group for including something about transportation congestion in this section? Okay, Jan, you had your hand up?
I, I was just adding a comment. Yes, I think we simply cannot widen 101 any way I can see. And so we have a really strong limitation there, and we've, we've reached probably level D a lot of the times in terms of service. And so we, there is an ultimate capacity limitation on our, on our road, street system. And we're, we're pushing it right now.
Okay. Any other, any other comments, questions, motions?
Yeah, on that subject, the, the transportation and road that kind of really concerned for a lot of constituents out in the Los Inquit area, that we, while a lot of people have been fighting over and very concerned over the last year here, is the county planning on expanding the, I guess, the main line? So that was a, a large part of, I, we don't know for sure if that's part of what changing of, of transportation, how the effects land use. And also moving the, the work site for the county. But that, that's, that's a, that's a big concern of a lot of residents out here in my area. As, as, as traffic become more congested.
Thank you all. Okay, any, any other comments, questions, motions on the future conditions section? Okay, hearing none. So this is, this is us moving into objectives and policies, which in some respects is sort of the meat of, of today's session. Let's, let's try to go through one, one objective set at a time and work through them. If you have recommendations, changes, this is a part where I think motions are appropriate to express the will of the group. I would also encourage you, you know, hopefully folks have reviewed things like the, the commentary from one of the commissioners. If you have disagreement and want to keep things in, you might want to express that at this point. Or if you agree and think that some things should be struck, struck, express that as well. Just so that it's clear of what this group wants anyway. Gail, you have comment before we start?
Yeah, before we start, would it be possible to take a five-minute break?
Sure. Group, do you have any, any objection to taking a five-minute break before we move into objectives and policies? Any object, or any objection to us doing that? Gail, thank you for the question. I think people will appreciate that. So let's take a five-minute break. I've got 11:03. I'll try to get us started again at 11:08. Thank you all.
This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you, Gail. So we'll start up again as people filter back in. So we're moving on to objectives and policies. So this section begins on page 30 of the packet. The first objective set is around climate change. Is there any comments, motions, discussion points on objective one for climate change? Cheryl, I will just let you know, Cheryl, if you raise your other hand, it's easier to see because you've got sort of a white hand on a white background was difficult for me to pick out, but Cheryl.
Oh, noted. I would try to use the other hand. I just have a process question clarification to make sure that I understand our process going forward and to make sure that we're all on the same page. My understanding is that what we're going to go through now, which is objectives, policies, and goals, as written and, as written in front of us, is what will go to the county commissioners unless we add or delete anything today. Is that correct?
Gail, do, do you think that's an accurate statement?
It may not be 100% accurate because after today's meeting, this will go back to the Planning Commission for their recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, and the Planning Commission could recommend additional changes.
Okay, good. That process makes sense to me, and I had forgotten that step. Thank you for the clarification.
So do, so just, just to clarify, so do you think that without recommendation from this group, that this, this draft of objectives and policies that we see in front of us is the draft that would go through to the Planning Commission without change?
As far as I can foretell, yes, there are still, obviously, some things that need to be flushed out here in the future conditions that may lead staff to make additional recommendations in the policy section. And those would be noted as added by staff when it goes to the Planning Commission.
I, I would imagine, and certainly the root of my question is just, should we anticipate any changes from the memo about the meeting with Commissioner Banks to this group of objectives and policies before it goes forward to the Plan Commission?
Okay, so staff's job is to make sure that all the information is presented to all the parties. It is not staff's job to decide what to incorporate and what not to incorporate out of those discussions. And so that's why we have committee members and a Planning Commission and a Board of Commissioners. Staff is here to relay the information only.
Respectfully, Gail, I don't think that answers my question. And I wasn't, I wasn't questioning staff's role here. I'm, I'm just wanting to know if, if this is the draft that we're anticipating going forward, if we don't make comment on it.
Yes, but as I understood your question, with all due respect, Chair, you, I think I understood you to ask if staff would be incorporating the changes from Commissioner Banks into this draft.
Yes, that was part of my question.
My answer did answer your question then.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the group before we begin on objectives and policies?
Yes. With respect to climate change, one thing, under this objective, that I didn't see a policy that's addressing is that, again, back, back to community water supplies, as, as we have experienced and certainly experienced with, with my, our own water district, Alcoa Water District. We, we, we had to have a moratorium because our water supply was so severely impacted by four successive years of drought. So what that translates to for me is going forward and looking to the future, like 2040, there needs to be some mechanism in place to gate new development and new homes as a function of the ever-changing capacity, the intrinsic capacity of the water districts. Because if our water's drying up, we can't support more development. So if there's a way to capture that, I'd sure love to see it.
Okay, thank you, Charles. Any other comments before we get started, before we jump in here? Okay, so let's, let's talk affirmatively about climate change, objective one. Any other, any recognizing that Charles was just talking about this objective, really? Any other comments, changes, suggestions on objective one? Jan?
I'm just wondering if Charles wants to put that in form of a, of a policy.
Yeah, I knew somebody was going to ask me to do that. So I'm, I'm, my, the wheels have been turning here, but they're turning a little slow. That's all.
You guys talk on and I'll, I'll figure out something to propose.
Okay, thank you, Charles. Uh, Robert?
Just briefly, I, I note that down at Mendocino, it's sold by, you know, hundreds of dollars for a truckload of water being brought in. You know, it wasn't saying they, they couldn't build, but they have built and they don't have water. So they haul it in from far away at huge expense. And I'm just saying, you know, that's one of our options.
Thank you, Albert. Charles, if you have language to suggest, uh, at some point, feel free to, uh, to put it in chat or, or bring it back up.
Yeah, I'm, I'm putting in chat now.
Okay, thank you. Like, we can pause for a second, uh, awaiting that unless someone else wants to make, uh, comment on objective one, climate change. Okay. Let, let me, uh, just ask if we want to, if anyone has discussion points or, or things we want to suggest for riparian corridors, the next objective. I think, um, uh, Gail, just a question here, are, are these objectives? Uh, I know that this, this is also an objective one. Uh, does that follow? I- is it renumbering because it's in a new section for riparian corridors? Uh, is that the way I should read that?
That's correct. We can change that if there is a better, uh, way of numbering to, that would perhaps provide better clarity.
I, I, I don't necessarily, uh, desire a change. I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding that correctly. Uh, any, any comments or questions from the group? Oh, I now see a, a comment from Charles. So, uh, so Charles, should I take that as a motion to include that language as a, a policy F?
Please.
Okay. Uh, so I've got a motion on the table. Uh, Gail is, is hopefully putting it up for us, uh, that we encourage a policy F, uh, which would be the county will include the future plan concerns of the infrastructure districts such as water districts in looking at future development such as number of homes in a water district or community water supplier. Uh, is there a second for the motion to include that language? Checking one more time. Any seconds for that motion?
Second from Cheryl.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Uh, is there a discussion of this motion? Uh, Charles, you, go ahead, Jan.
I think the, the form is a little awkward, you know, in terms of the brackets, but I think staff can put the wording, well, can put it in wording and it, and certainly, um, the, the availability of water is got to be a major concern when, uh, staff is reviewing project proposals. So I think it, it shouldn't be hard to put that into language.
Yeah, and my, and my preference would be we, we not get too bogged down in wordsmithing, uh, with any of this, that, that we trust staff to, to reword as necessary to make things more clear. Uh, Robert?
So if, if someone wanted to use reverse osmosis or something, you know, uh, turning seawater into drinking water, will that kind of be up in the, in this concept, kind of up to the water district as the how that's allowed within the bounds of the district? You know, I'm, it, it just, I'm, I'm, I'm used to, uh, places around the world, how they deal with not having our abundant rain. This, you know, I'm, 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 I'm not trying to close down our thinking, you know, but, you know, our God given right to have endless population growth. Uh, as long as we think up expensive ways to uh, provide water.
Thank you, Albert. Um, I'm going to ask the group, is there any objection to taking, uh, public comment from, it looked like Chad came off of mute. Any objection to hearing from Chad on this? Okay, Chad, did you want to make comment?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to see the county will include the future planning concerns of the county instead of just the infrastructure districts, because if we're talking about single-use, uh, water supplies or three and four people water supplies, it could be a planning concern if house number five and six want to join that water supply and there's simply not enough. So I think it's really, it's the county's planning concerns based on input from infrastructure districts, but we shouldn't limit the concerns to only those of infrastructure districts. That's all.
Thank you for the comment. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll just say as an aside, members are, are welcome to, uh, motion to amend this language if, if needed to. And while I encourage us not to get into wordsmithing, if, if there's substantive changes, like, uh, maybe what Chad is saying, uh, would be a substantive change. I think that's appropriate if we want to do that, but any, uh, any other discussion, motions, uh, amendments to this? And Gail, thank you for revising language on the fly. Uh, Charles, if, if this, the new language doesn't run afoul of your original motion, I'll, I'll read it, uh, as we come to a vote here.
Yeah, I'm looking at it. Oh, there we go.
Any, any other, uh, comments or amendments from the group here? Okay, uh, so not hearing any more comments or amendments. Uh, Charles, does that capture the sentiment well enough? Can I read as amended here?
Yes, uh, it, it, it does.
Okay, great. Uh, so, so we've got a motion on the, on the floor, uh, with language amended, uh, by staff for, to include a policy F, the county will include the future planning concerns of the infrastructure districts, including water, sanitary sewer and fire districts in looking at future development. Such review will include the number of homes supplied. Uh, we've got a second for that motion. Uh, let's go through the group and see if we can do a, a quick vote here. Um, Carrie Johnson, how do you vote, uh, on the inclusion of this policy F?
I'm going to vote no on this one. I, I could give some explanation, but for now I'm going to vote no.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Jim Allegria, how do you vote? Uh, was, sorry, Jim, could you restate your vote? I, uh, mute timing. I think you're saying yay, but I'm still not hearing you. I don't know if the mic has gone off or what. Okay, I got a thumbs up. Um, Robert Strickland, how do you vote? I got another thumbs up. Thank you. Um, Charles Dice, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Cheryl Johnson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Pat Corcoran, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Nam Quan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Nadia Gardner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Jan Mitchell, how do you vote?
Aye.
All right, and let me check. I think I've gotten everyone. Have I missed anyone with this vote? I think John has dropped, uh, for hopefully technical reasons. Uh, I have a vote of eight to one. That was my count. Uh, so the motion passes. Thank you all. Um, any, any other comments, motions, uh, discussion on the climate change section here? Okay, let's, let's move down to riparian corridors. Uh, so for riparian corridors, any discussion points, uh, comments, motions? Well, Cheryl, are you active or just?
Yeah, I had a comment. Um, my notes on my, uh, printout at home that I scribbled on the side is that, uh, this might be the place where we were going to discuss, uh, standard inventory or safe harbor. I am not the expert on those, so I'm not qualified to lead that discussion. Just my notes say that this was the place that we were maybe going to pick that up.
Thanks, Cheryl, for bringing that up. Um, Nadia, I see you came off of mute. Do you have comment?
Well, I just see at policy F there does say that, um, instead of safe harbor, that there's an E S E E analysis. Isn't that right?
Is, is that an accurate reading of that, do you think, Gail? That po- that policy F would indicate not safe harbor that we'd be doing an inventory?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
My, so my, I just, I don't have a motion in this section, but just, I think it's really important that, um, the planning commission and the county commission understand um, those questions that I had initially around that is, um, you know, we need to do a riparian inventory and, you know, w- w- what's the best path? We need to understand the cost and time and labor issues around that. Um, I think, you know, all of us would want, uh, the outcome to be as detailed and tailored as possible, but I think there's a reason why safe harbor exists, especially when you're at a county scale versus a city scale.
Any other, uh, comments or motions for the riparian corridor section here?
Uh, this is Charles.
Charles?
Yeah, so policy, uh, whoops, where is it? Damn it. I thought it was on the screen, but hang on a minute. Um, policy G, I guess it's not on the screen, but policy G, um, says the county should work with property owners, elected and appointed officials to determine the level of regulation, et cetera. I, you know, I, I, I don't know why it's restricted to property owners and elected officials, but I certainly like to have community members also be able to weigh in on, uh, this issue and.
Charles, do you want to make a motion to see if the lines with the rest of the group or is that just a point of comment?
Um, no, I'd, I'd, I'd be happy to make a motion and, and, and the motion would be just to say that should work with property owners, community members, just insert those two words, community members, and elected and appointed officials.
So we've got a motion to insert the word, uh, community words, community members after property owners in policy G. Is there a second for that motion?
I said it.
Okay, so I think Jan beat you to it, Nadia. Sorry about that. Um, I've got a motion and a second, uh, to insert the word, uh, words, community members in policy G. Is there a discussion from the group, uh, about the insertion of that? I, I, I don't think I'm, um, I don't think I'm amiss according to our bylaws for, for just making a discussion point. I will, uh, I will note to the group that this is a policy that one commissioner has already, um, given an opinion that, that she would not like to see. And I think the inclusion of community members will make it more difficult, uh, for this to survive, the, the county commission. Uh, so do, do what you want with, with this, but I think, um, yeah, that's my comment. Pat?
Uh, yeah, I have a little concern about that too of unintended consequences. And I'm wondering, does the public as, uh, concerned here have other mechanisms for weighing in on the process other than this particular, uh, goal and objective? Cause I agree with you, Chair. So I guess that's a staff question. I mean, um, I understand the need to include community input on that, but I'm wondering if in the regular process of those decisions, if there would be other opportunities for community members to weigh in on that, that would not need this particular objective in this particular location?
At a minimum, depending, uh, on changes that would be made to either the comprehensive plan in the future to address this issue or to our implementing ordinances, there would be public hearings. So there, at a minimum, there would be public hearings on this. Uh, and then above and beyond that goal, one would encourage, if not require, uh, the county to hold, um, public informational meetings and sessions as well to obtain input on any proposed changes to the code. And at the level of tho- those public outreach efforts would, uh, I guess vary depending upon staff time and availability and the issue at hand. Again, goal one requires our public involvement plan to be commensurate with the undertaking at hand. So the larger the undertaking, the more people affected, the larger the public outreach should be.
Is it also true then that, um, folks in whatever, uh, sub-districts, um, need to keep an eye on what's emerging on the horizon in order for them to be involved in those public processes? Does that not also argue then for the, the keeping of the, the sub-regional groups? Maybe you can't answer that, but it, it seems like, um, if it's left up the regular goal one policies that a local group concerned about that would need to kind of keep a sharp eye on that. And I'm wondering if that doesn't lead to some legitimization for, uh, keeping the sub-groups. I know that's under some question. Is that even a question? I'm sorry, Gail.
Technically, it's a question. It's not one that, uh, staff is in a position to answer.
Thank you.
Jan?
Gail, with the normal process, um, if somebody's putting in an application, would you be notifying the adjacent neighbors anyway?
Yes, Jason, if, if it's a specific application that's been submitted, we would notify, um, property owners, depending upon the zone, anywhere from a hundred to seven hundred and fifty feet. If it's a legislative action, uh, and it's something that may change the value of somebody's property, then we have a requirement to send out what's called a measure fifty-six notice where we have to notify all affected property owners individually. Uh, we typically do that with a postcard or a mailer and there are requirements that we have to spell out in that notification, what the proposal is, uh, what the, uh, impact might be on the property or at least that it may change values of their property, uh, when the hearing is and some other requirements. So there would be a required notice for an effort like this where we're talking about, uh, protections to riparian corridors. Yeah.
Gail, can I ask clarification on this? Just, uh, so, so my understanding with, if, if we're in, in the plan here, if we're putting forward a policy that, uh, directs the county to go toward a, a system of creating an inventory through E S E analysis and, and the other inventory inclusions that, that were in the O A R instead of safe harbor, that part of that is uh, that as opposed to the safe harbor system where it's got uh, essentially corridor protection widths set out in statute already, uh, that an inventory system allows the county to set their setback, whatever they want on individual corridors. Uh, is that part of my understanding correct anyway? The inventory system leads us to then set our own setback for every particular quarter. Or however long it goes.
That, that would be my understanding as well, yes.
So my, and, and my reading of policy G is to do with that process, not, not to do necessarily with the process of like individual parcel landowner decisions, but how the county treats the, uh, the outlay of this inventory uh, and then moving to setbacks for parts of that inventory, that the county is going to work with property owners, elected and appointed officials in that. that the county is going to work with property owners, elected and appointed officials in that process. Am I, I just want to make sure I'm understanding the layout of process correctly there.
Correct, yeah, your, your understanding is correct.
Okay, so we're just talking about whether community members are included in the process of setting setbacks or limitations around riparian corridors as opposed to community members talking about individual property decisions? That, that's what Policy G is directed toward. Okay.
As staff though, I would still point out that even though there are property owners whose property will be affected, it's, it's also a discussion that we have to have public input on. So I mean, technically, including community members is correct because under Goal One, we are going to be required to have public participation. I'm not sure whether that needs to be explicitly stated in Policy G, but technically, it would be correct.
Thank you for clarifying, Gail. Any, any other discussion before we go to a vote on this? Pat?
I guess, Charles, I appreciate, I understand where you're coming from on that. I do wonder about unintended consequences, like someone from Westport saying they're in the community of Clatsop County and there could be some unintended consequences there. So I'm inclined to, to vote nay on this, but I, because I understand there are other mechanisms for public to get involved.
Thank you, Pat. Okay, let's go, let's go around for a vote on this one. So I'll just go, go around the table again. Again, the motion is to insert the words "community members" into Policy G so that the policy will read the county should work with property owners, community members, elected and appointed officials to determine the level of regulation necessary to protect any riparian corridors identified as a Goal Five resource. Carrie Johnson, how do you vote?
I'm going to vote no.
Jim Allegria, how do you vote?
I'll vote no.
Okay. Robert Strickland, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, Charles Dice, how do you vote?
Aye.
Cheryl Johnson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, Pat Corcoran, how do you vote?
Is a go vote? No, I guess, I'll say no.
Okay. Nadia Gardner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay. Mom Kwan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jan Mitchell, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay. I think that's all the voting members. Did I miss anyone? Hearing none, I believe I have a vote of six to three, and that is approved. Thank you all. Okay. Circling back to this section as a whole, any other comments, feedback, motions on riparian corridors? Okay, hearing none, we can move down to wetlands. I will, I'll just note that, Charles, you had brought up a point earlier about including some language about creating or working on an inventory. I don't know what language in particular you would like here, but I just wanted to remind you. But any, any other comments or discussion points or motions on the wetlands section here?
I, what do I want to say? So we are adopting the statewide or using the statewide wetland inventory, which is better than the national wetlands inventory, but definitely not better than a local, than having local wetlands inventories. But I will say, like, I was comparing, like, for example, the statewide wetland inventory doesn't show wetlands in Arch Cape. And then, but because they adopted our Arch Cape and Falcon Cove Beach local wetland inventory, it does. So that's an example of why it's important to identify all the significant wetlands throughout the county. So I guess I'm just pointing that out. And then it seems to me that makes, that the Clatsop Plains report is a first step to doing that. And I don't know if there's somewhere in here that we can encourage that? And then also look at, I mean, I guess it does say already, significant, identify significant wetlands throughout the county. So much. I also want to note, in the, in the County Commission meetings, they were talking about the Wetland Committee. And I know Carrie Johnson, who's on our call today, is, was part of that committee. So I'm wondering if he has any comments around what that, what came out of that committee and whether some of this fits in or doesn't fit into some of the consensus that was reached there.
Carrie, do you have any comment?
Um, I think there was some consensus reached in, in the, in the meetings that we had, although I don't know how much of it was ever implemented. So I guess, I guess I'd like to know whatever, what was the result of that? And if, if any of that ever was put into place. Some of us put in a substantial amount of time working on that, and I don't know if anything ever, ever came out of that. So I guess I'd be curious to know what, what the result of that was, if anybody has any info on that.
Yeah, this is Gail. Back in March of 2017, the recommendations from the Wetlands Advisory Committee was brought forward to the Board of Commissioners. I believe there were four specific recommendations that the Advisory Committee made. The board did not take any action on those recommendations from the Advisory Committee, and nothing has been done with them further since that time. We did speak to the board about this a few months ago, and the board did agree in their work session that they would like to revisit those recommendations from the Advisory Committee, and we have not yet scheduled that for a date before the board for another work session.
So thanks for that, Gail.
Any other comments, questions, motions here?
Yeah, this is Charles. So I just made a motion. I don't, I don't, I don't know exactly which policy it, or whether it should be a new policy, or perhaps, I'm trying to scan my copy so I can see all of the policies here under wetlands, that it looks like there are a bunch of them, like, all the way through N. But the intent, the intent, and I get all the, the devil's always in the details. But the intent is to make sure that the county does adopt the best available data. And as an example, we have a local wetland inventory for Arch Cape and Cove Beach that was done a few years ago by a third-party professional company. And it was submitted to D S L and adopted by D S L. But it was never adopted by the county. So if the meaning of the first sentence here, I think it's the first sentence. Oh, I scrolled off the page again. Now I can't find it. Go back on my copy.
Yeah, I think, I think really probably what's, what you're targeting here is not one of the policies, but the, the opening statement. The opening statement lists that the county's protecting wetlands identified in the state wetland inventory. I'm thinking you're really wanting to change that, if I'm reading your, your motion there.
Well, I mean, if, if that were true, if that were true, then it seems to me that the county would have already adopted the local wetland inventory for Arch Cape and Cove Beach, because it was adopted by D S L. And it, it depends on exactly how you want to read that, that statement. I'm just trying, I suppose, I'm just making a point of making it a policy so that it's really specific.
Sure. So we've got, we've got motion language in the chat. The language as, as written is the county will adopt the best available wetlands inventory, including but not limited to those adopted by, by D S L. I'd say, as written, the motion would probably be a new policy. Is there a second for that motion? Just, okay. Anyone want to second that motion? Okay, so I think, Charles, at, at the moment, that is dying for lack of a second.
Okay.
Gail, a lot of curiosity here, because I'm not part of Arch Cape and not been privy to all of these discussions or permutations of what's going on. Can you give staff perspective or background on? If, if there are watershed inventory, local watershed inventories that have been accepted by the state, are, are they or are they not included in, in county policy? I'm just trying to understand what the, what the current condition is.
So what staff does in practice is if a property owner comes in to develop property in the Arch Cape or Cove Beach area, we look both at that statewide wetland inventory as required to under state statute, but we do also consult the Arch Cape local wetland inventory. And we do let the property owners know when one or both of those show the possible location of wetlands on a property. What I think is, Charles is advocating for, is that he would like the county to officially adopt that Arch Cape local wetland inventory from 2010 or 2011 so that the county then has a platform to use to add and develop additional regulations regarding those wetlands identified in that inventory that would give them additional protection. Right now, staff is not required to utilize that inventory. We do, we have no additional protections that apply to any of the wetlands identified in that inventory. And I think specifically with regard to the Southwest Coastal Committee, that, that would be what they were, would be looking for.
Is, yeah, I mean, he, both, both he and Nadia have said, said something to the effect of those already being approved or included by the state. Is that, is there some distinction there that, that I'm missing, at least in this discussion?
So 10 years ago, when the state approved this, it, it's like a delineation to an extent, but it's not to the degree and accuracy of a delineation, which would have gone onsite property by property and staked out all the boundaries. In the hierarchy of wetlands, the national wetland inventory is probably the broadest and most inaccurate. And then we've inversely pyramid down, you've got your statewide, you've got your local inventories, and then you have an actual delineation for a specific piece of property, which would be the most accurate and detailed that you could get. The state is basically signing off on the local wetland inventory, saying that they're in agreement with the boundaries that have been drawn. But it's not a delineation, just to be very clear.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Nadia, I see a hand up.
Yeah, so it's like, I'm really thankful that D S L recognized that local wetland inventory adopted. And I'm also very thankful for staff, both Carol Hendrickson's staff, but even staff prior to her coming on and using it, you know, in, in day-to-day operations. But knowing where they are is different than going through the safe harbor E S E E process that's required once the county adopts it. So if the county adopted it, it would make it, it would make it a requirement that they go through one of those processes to, to, to better protect them. And that's why they've avoided doing it so far. And so I think what, you know, this, if you look at the comprehensive plan of Arch Cape, for the past 40 years, the community members of Arch Cape have advocated for additional buffers on our streams and wetlands. And it's, we sometimes have them and sometimes don't, and depending on interpretations, I think. And so we as a community, and maybe this isn't the case in every community in Clatsop County, but we as a community, the vast majority want to protect those resources. And so by allow, by asking the county to adopt that and going through that process, then we can really figure out, you know, permanently how we want to protect those resources. And so, so that second step is needed in order to get there. So maybe we need to narrow, because in this, at this, at this moment, I believe that we're the only ones that have a local wetland inventory. So maybe we just, for this, for the benefit of this, and we want to narrow it to just say, the county will adopt the local wetland inventory for Arch Cape and Cove Beach.
Yeah.
Want to make it broader.
Okay. So I'm not picking on Arch Cape and I'm not picking on wetlands, but from a staff perspective, the concern I have is we've recently had some projects come through and some approved delineations from D S L come through that show that there are some significant discrepancies in what the local wetland, wetland inventory picked up 10 years ago and what's actually being ground truth on these properties today. So from a staff perspective, I think there's some concern that we may be applying buffers and protections to areas that actually don't have wetlands on them, and we may be missing areas that do have wetlands on them that weren't captured or didn't exist 10 years ago. So that, that's my only concern from staff. It's not to pick on Arch Cape or anything like that, but we do know that there are some discrepancies going on. And I think that you would want to have that updated before we made a recommendation. So, you know, a recommendation that says, you know, once it's updated, the county can review it, but a staff would have some concerns with it as it's.
I appreciate that concern. That wetland delineation is, or that, sorry, that local inventory, which is not a delineation. It's really important that we not refer to it as that, is, you know, what those consultants did is walk down platted roads. You know, we got, they got permission as much as they could to go on people's properties, but when they didn't, because a lot of times you just don't get responses from landowners, they walked the platted roads, and Arch Cape is full of platted roads. And so, but it's still a lot, it's not going to be 100%. No local wetland inventory will be, but it's as accurate as you can get without being delineated. And I think that's the case anywhere a local inventory happens. And 10 years is not like enough time, even in this climate change world. You know, that to lose or gain wetlands, it probably just has to do with, you know, what you could see at the time from the platted roads and things like that. I think you can expect that kind of discrepancy. It is a heck of a lot better than the statewide inventory and way better than the national wetland inventory. So it's, unless your plan is to do a delineation of every property within those areas, I think you have to expect that there's going to be some, you know, some things that are not 100% on the land. And so I think as part of that process, E S E E or safe harbor, you can work on that, figure out like, okay, so if it is, is the case that it's not exactly right on this property and the delineation is different, then the buffer is different, you know? But, but it is not, certainly not the first county or city that's ever had to deal with that in the past. I mean, it's, it's the case everywhere. So it feels to me like, and, you know, you hear those discussions on the county commission level too, but it feels to me like- but it feels to me like just a reason to keep putting off doing what our community has wanted for 30, 40 years. And, and in the meantime, we're under an incredible amount of pressure to develop. And so the, the city, the watershed council and the community members raised money to be able to do it. And the, and the state approved it. And so it feels like this is a gift to the, to the county to be able to be more accurate than what, how we were able to be in the past. And you know, the, the, the community members are committed, I think, to figure out a way forward that can, can, can result in, in better protections as we get more and more pressure to develop on the east side of the highway in those wetland areas.
Okay, any, checking with the group, any other comments, questions, motions for this section, the wetlands section?
Just a thought, picking up what Nadia was saying. It's very unlikely the county will take a top to bottom wetlands inventory or a lot of the other inventories. You know, it's demonstrated that local groups can self-fund scientifically legitimate enough, local data, environmental data broadly, that's been acknowledged by the state. It's beyond, I think, this cop plan, but is there a way for this mosaic of local interests that meet a certain scientific standard? Is there a way to start sort of accepting those from various folks that can self-fund legitimate research rather than sort of never doing that? I guess that's a staff question, and that's, I also think back to, we're not the first county to go through this, and I'm wondering if that's been a solution elsewhere.
I'm not sure I entirely understood your question, Patrick.
Okay, it's sort of, I'm sorry, almost like crowdsourcing for legitimate scientific data. I mean, if all of the sub-areas had groups that would self-fund wetlands inventory stuff that was legitimate at some sort of level, and to have a way to ingest that into county decision-making or to consider it for county decision-making, it would seem over time, there would be more data rather than less. It seems we're kind of stymied without having a full-scale inventory. Can we patch one together over time and establish legitimate criteria for that research? It just seemed, you know, a shame to have that kind of initiative not rewarded at all. But I can also see competing kind of junk science going on as well. So I think the focus would have to be on what would constitute, I think, the fact the state accepted, that might be one criteria. Maybe those are just, that's not a question.
Yeah, and those would be, we would rely on something that was DSL approved in terms of a local wetland inventory. And then, like we do with Arch Cape, if the board chose not to adopt it and provide additional protections around those resources, we would use it just as a tool to help us further identify for property owners when there could be the potential for wetlands on their property. So that can be done now.
Thanks, Gail.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the wetlands? Or motions? Okay, not, not seeing or hearing any. Shall we move on to, oh, Nadia, are you writing one now?
I'm working on my motion. I just hit enter because I can't. I'll just keep it broad. So I, you know, I think this is something we've always been doing, but I think just to reiterate the interest of the Cove Beach and Arch Cape folks, I think it's important to at least say that the county shall explore adopting the Arch Cape, Cove Beach local wetland inventory and going through the appropriate goal five process. That's E S E E or Safe Harbor. So that's just a placeholder. The county shall explore adopting the Arch Cape, Cove Beach local wetland inventory and going through the appropriate goal five process, E S E E or Safe Harbor.
Okay, so I've got a motion, a second. I will, I will note that, that already we've got an existing policy that's noted, or that's directing the county to do an E S E E analysis, which doesn't seem constrained to any geographic area, which is policy G. But
I can't imagine the county actually doing that right now. I mean, it's been like so difficult to just get Arch Capes adopted. You know, doing the entire county E S E E is going to be, it would be a miracle, I feel like.
I mean, I, if I could say one more thing, I don't want to beat this to death, although I obviously am. But it just puzzles me, it really puzzles me why the county would not want to adopt the best data that's available for, for these local wetland inventories. I mean, okay, fine, it's, that maybe now it's 10 years, or nine or 10 years old, but it's, as everybody has pointed out, it's far better than the national wetland inventory or the state wetland inventory. And no, it is not, you know, a delineation. And if property owners have an issue with it, or they think it's not accurate, they all have the opportunity to hire their own consultants and do their own delineation, which the county is going to just accept. So I, it just puzzles me why the county wouldn't want to use the best available data.
Okay, so, so we've got, we do have a motion, a second on, on the table now. I'll just, Gail, thank you for, for recording it and, and then expanding the language there. So this is to insert a policy O. The county shall explore adopting the Arch Cape, Cove Beach local wetland inventory and going through the appropriate goal five process, E S E E or Safe Harbor. So that's the motion, can, is there any further discussion of this motion?
What was the policy G that was referenced?
Gail, can you scroll up just a, just a touch here? I, I was just referring, so, so Nadia was including this language about E S E E or Safe Harbor, and I was indicating that my understanding anyway, reading through the policies, is policy G is, is already directing the county to do an E S E E analysis for additional wetlands in the county for the inventory. So that's what, does that, is that clear, Carrie, what I'm referring to there?
That's clear, and I think it covers us.
So just as a clarification, so there's like the inventory, like knowing that they exist. And then there's going through the goal five process to actually protect them. And so it's the first one, I think, you know, county staff is doing the best they can with the information they have, including our local wetland inventory. It's the second part that's missing. And the actual, so the, the inventorying, I mean, gosh, I'd like to inventory every wetland in riparian quarter in county. But if you don't then take that second step, what's the point of knowing about it?
Any, any further discussion on this? On this motion? Okay, well, let's go, let's go to a vote then. Gail, I'm sorry, can you scroll down just a bit so I can see the whole language? Thank you. So this is a vote on inserting a policy O. Again, that policy shall explore adopting the Arch Cape, Cove Beach local wetland inventory and going through the appropriate goal five process, E S E E or Safe Harbor. I'll go around the table and see what everyone would like to vote. I'll start with Carrie Johnson, how would you vote on this insertion?
No.
Thank you. Jim Allegria, how would you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Robert Strickland, how would you vote?
Aye.
Charles Dice, how would you vote?
Yes.
Johnson, how would you vote?
Yes.
Pat Corcoran, how would you vote?
Aye.
Nadia Gardner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Lam Kwan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Jan Mitchell, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. I believe I've gotten all of voting members counted. Have I missed anyone? I've got a vote of eight to one, so the motion passes. Any other items for us to consider on wetlands, on the wetlands section? I will say, I'm conscious of, of our time right now, whereas I've got 12:06. I'll just circle back around, but if we think we're sufficiently finished with wetlands at the moment, this might be a good point for someone to make a motion for us to recess for 30 minutes so that we could take lunch. Alternatively, I know we did take a five-minute break around 11:00. So if you, if you are feeling chipper and want to keep going, we can do that. I just want to bring that up in case someone wants to make that motion for us to go to lunch.
I saw move.
Okay, sir, second for that motion?
Second.
Okay, so, so a motion to recess is not debatable, so we'll just go straight to a vote. This is a, this is a motion to recess for 30 minutes. We just take 30 minutes off and come directly back and start working on wildlife again. So I'll go direct to a vote. Carrie Johnson, how do you vote on recessing for 30 minutes?
Yes.
Jim Allegria?
Yes.
Robert, how do you vote?
Aye.
Charles, how do you vote?
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you. Pat Corcoran, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Nadia Gardner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Nam, how do you vote? Lam Kwan?
Aye.
Thank you. And Jan Mitchell, how do you vote? Okay, so registering no opposition, we can recess for 30 minutes. I will try to get us started again at 12:37. Thank you.
This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you, Gail. So welcome back from recess, everyone. I will just open the floor by saying, we took a recess just as we were transitioning into wildlife habitat. So open discussion for any points of clarification, comments, motions for the wildlife habitat section. And it's, Gail has hopefully got that up on the screen, it's starting on page 31 of the packet. Anyone have comments, questions, or motions for wildlife habitat? Cheryl?
I wanted to just share a little bit of information about process. This is a very complex policy. And we had involvement from one of the state agencies to help us with this from Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. And I thought it was a very positive exchange. And the suggestions that were made ended up being in this draft. The planning commission was not part of that process, but the countywide CAC was. So I just wanted to take a minute and just talk about that. In the original policies for policy three and policy four, which would be on that big fold-out, the comments say that under staff recommendation, that Mike Sinnett, Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife Assistant Biologist, his suggestion was that they bring the riparian protection ordinances into alignment with Oregon Forest Practices Act. And what he shared with us is that the riparian protection is different amounts in different places. And he was suggesting that we standardize it, number one, and that we standardize it to match Oregon Forest Practices Act. And my best read, I see that that showed up in policy D. And then on on, oh, yes, and then on the back of our paper and in policy Q. So I just thought that was very positive interaction. And it did show up in this long list of ones here. And it, so I just wanted to share the background on how we got there, and that that was from the assistant biologist.
Thank you, Cheryl. I do have one, one just quick question, which is in policy C. Gail, there's a section that's highlighted, is that significant in any way, or is that just a draft thing?
It's mainly for staff. I remember during our discussions, and I think at that workshop that Cheryl just referenced, there was a discussion about how class one and class two were no longer the official correct terms. And I've been trying to go back through our materials to identify what those correct terms are.
Okay, so, so you're just anticipating replacing terms there when you, when you find the right ones?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Other, other questions, comments, motions on this section? Cheryl, oh, thank you for switching hands, too.
Better late than never. I just wanted to mention to Gail that the class one and class two streams are the old terminology that was used by Forest Practices Act. And I think at least locally, there are people on this call right now, I think, that can certainly help you with that. But Ashley Latoura from Oregon Department of Forestry, who sits in on a lot of these and has worked with us, I think she can easily provide you with correct terminology.
Thanks, Cheryl. He stepped away now, but Pat, are you within, are you trying to get microphone ready so that you can say something?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go for it, if you want to.
I'm sorry, my audio is out too. Are these introductions?
No, we're just looking for, for comments or motions on the wildlife habitat section of goal five.
I'm sorry, I have no comment at this time.
Okay, fair enough. Nadia?
Just a comment in that some of our threatened and endangered species in the county reply, rely on riparian protections, but some do not. So goal one really focuses on riparian riparian vegetation and, and resources. I see that where they talk, we're talking about elk, and we're talking about fragmented habitats, and we're talking about nesting areas. So the, the one that pops into my mind is my favorite little marble marolette. And so marble marolette lives in old growth forests in Akola State Park, Oswald West, and, and Saddle Mountain, as well as fragmented pieces on ODF and other forest land. And anyway, I just am pointing out that the goal really focuses on riparian. And then the policies, I think, do cover all the habitats. But maybe we want to clean up goal one to, to better reflect that we're not just focusing on salmon, which is, when we're talking about riparian, is usually what we're talking about.
Thanks, Nadia. Other items from, from the group on this wildlife habitat section? So I don't, this, this may reflect a shortage of understanding on my part. I, I just want to note that policy S, as in Sam, uniquely notes the Chinook Indian Nation. I don't, I, maybe that's appropriate, maybe they're the only tribal constituency that has a concern with the elk in the area. But if we're changing language to make it more broad, that might be a one good flag. Other, other items for motions from the group about the wildlife section? If, if not, I think we can move on. Yes, Nadia?
Yes, so do I have to make then, do I have to rewrite the goal one to Yes. Do I have to make them? Do I have to rewrite the Goal One to be more inclusive of those other wildlife, or could I just, could we empower staff to look at that section and make sure it's more inclusive of habitats supporting Columbia whitetail deer, marble murelet, and other listed species?
I don't know that I have an answer to that, staff or others.
I think there's two ways we could do it. One would be to have Goal One and then rearrange the policies. So those that are dealing with riparian habitat-protected species would immediately follow that. And then if the committee wants to come up with a separate goal to address non-riparian habitat species, we could do it that way. Otherwise, staff could find additional wording to change Goal One to be more inclusive.
I think it'd be easier to just to change goal. It is kind of silly to have one goal for each one of these and then this huge list. I think in an ideal world, we would do multiple goals, but I don't want to make, you know, too much more work for staff or myself. So I might just suggest that you add, you know, four sentences to Goal One. You know, I think riparian is certainly a primary concern. So I think I would leave that language, but then also say, you know, other species rely on other kinds of important habitats, and then just go into the policies, leave them, leave it at that. Do other people have opinions on that?
Let me just check. Is there is there any, you know, Pat?
That would be kind of species inclusive along the riparian zone. Is that what I'm thinking? It's just what, yeah. So along that zone, it would be the full range. Birds, plants, animals in the riparian zone, right? Instead of the focus on one to broaden it out to include species requiring that habitat. Is that what I hear?
Well, I'm saying that there are some species in the county that do do not, like marble murelet, do not rely on riparian habitat. You could argue Columbia whitetail deer do, just because of where they like to hang out, but to their peril sometimes. But there's just, I mean, there's a huge list of listed and threatened, let alone sensitive and vulnerable species in the county. And they have all sorts of habitat needs that are not necessarily riparian.
Excellent. And I misunderstood your question. I thought that marble mureles were using the riparian zoning. You're trying to be inclusive there. Okay, thank you for that clarification, Nadia.
Cheryl, I just want to check. You had your hand up briefly and then and then it's gone down. Did you have comment before I moved to Jim?
I think Pat's questioning helped clarify mine. I wasn't sure whether Nadia was wanting to expand the concept of riparian vegetation or whether she was wanting to expand the concept of fish and wildlife habitat, which I thought covered what she wanted. But now I understand that that she wants to not limit it to riparian vegetation. So I got that. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. And then Jim? Oh, for some reason, I do not hear you at the moment, Jim. Okay. So and then Lisa just shared a long thing in chat. So I don't, I don't know who who may have time to to check that comment out in a second here. So I just want to restate from my own understanding, too. We're saying we would just want to expand the idea of habitat beyond riparian vegetation corridors so that we may have an emphasis on the riparian vegetation, but recognizing that there are other habitats that are still important for wildlife within the county that should have some protection. Yeah, is that the right wavelength, anyway? Nadia?
Yeah, I leave it to staff to take us to take a stab at it. I'm happy to to weigh in to Director Henrickson if you want to run anything by me. I'm happy to take a look at it from a environmental science standpoint.
Okay. And is there any objection from the group for for that sentiment being included in Goal One here? Okay, so so hearing no objection. Cool. Any other comments or and I I certainly have not had the time to read this comment from Lisa. I may delegate that in case someone else can can relay what's happening there. Or in case Lisa, Lisa, can you speak to it? Any objection from the group for Lisa speaking to this comment for a second? Okay, not 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 hearing objection. Lisa, can can you tell us briefly what you what you just put in the chat?
I did. I was just trying to use chat as just a place to not interrupt the train of thought. This is just going back to the cultural resources points that I had brought up earlier, and I just was including that. And I believe it'll be part of the recording, the recording as some of the information on on where the state was moving with adopting some rules for cultural resources. That's all.
Okay, all right. So so this is this is germane to earlier comments, not necessarily to the section we're we're looking at right now.
Correct. I just didn't want it to get lost in the fray.
Cool, thank you.
Yep.
Jan?
I read it, and it's good. And I think we could, I think staff could write policy that reflects that, and it would put us in a good space.
Is it correct that chat is not retained in the recording?
Yeah.
Gail, do you know? Chat, chat is retained. But what I found out is when my computer freezes, as it did last month, all the chat before my computer froze doesn't get saved. So hopefully, my computer doesn't freeze today. I have copied Lisa's text out and put it in a separate Word document that's saved, so.
Okay, thank you for the clarification there, Gail. Okay, let me check again. Any any other comments or motions on this wildlife habitat section? Okay, well, let's let's try and move down to the next short section, which is federal wild and scenic rivers. Any any comments on our paragraph for federal wild and scenic rivers? Okay, how about Oregon scenic waterways? Thank you, Gail. Okay, not hearing any for for state scenic waterways. How about groundwater resources? Any comments, discussion, or motions on groundwater resources? I do want to note that Jim, you had put a comment, it's further up in chat at this point. But and I just wrote down a note to come back to you when we get to these policies. Do you want to follow up on your earlier chat?
Can you hear me now, Andy?
I can.
All right, yeah.
Every time we go on a break, I use a Bluetooth connection and I have to try to reinitiate it. No, I just would like to make a comment about we had some new policies that we crafted and to reaffirm from the group that those policies should should remain. And I do have some additional rationale for it in the email that was sent earlier today. But essentially, for to reaffirm a reaffirmation of of some of the policies on participation with the private landowners, with the state and federal agencies, the importance of providing additional information for people on the dangers of water pollution, especially in a class of plains area, and also some what I would consider common sense motions for advocating water-saving devices and new developments, and and also putting in bioswales where it's appropriate. Those last two are not required, but it's to the county should encourage it.
Jim, do you do you want to, should I take that as a motion? Is it is it possible that you're looking, you're, it sounds like you're looking for a group vote of affirmation on on part of this content? Do you do you care to put a list out or anything like that so we can easily restate what what it is that you're wanting affirmation on?
This was essentially in response to some concerns by a commissioner. And that's what I'd like to do is to just say that is this really what the committee wants to bring forth? The whole group would like to bring forth. I personally, obviously, support the the new policies that we wrote. But and and I encourage people to read through the policies and the comments and also the comments that I made, that I submitted to to the group. And hopefully, we'll we'll make it to the county commissioners. So that's 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 essentially essentially it.
Okay.
Nothing, nothing new, just an affirmation of what we've done before.
So can I, so can I treat this as as a motion, what Gail has got in chat here, which is for the group to just affirm the draft policies as written? And that is just voice or support, especially working with private landowners for long-term monitoring, fragility of a class of plain groundwater, and the promotion of native vegetation and water conserving methods. Is that sufficient as a motion, Jim, to capture at least a portion of what you'd like?
It's better than what I could say. Thank you very much.
Well, I think you earlier.
Oh, okay.
Liam?
Yes. I don't know if this is the place for it, but I was voiced concern earlier about county roads roadside spraying. I don't know that this is appropriate place to put it, but I would, I would like to have a motion to have county explore different options other than using chemicals spray on roadside.
Let me, let me circle back to you to let you make that motion in a second, because I think that'll be a new policy. Let me, let me see if there's a second for what Jim had just brought up, and then I'll come right back to you, okay? So so let me check with the group. Is there a second for this motion of affirmation that Jim has has put on the table and Gail has in the comment here?
I second that.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. I'll just read this again that, and I'm I'm sort of paraphrasing this first bit of language here, but that we affirm the draft language as written, especially working with private landowners for long-term monitoring, the fragility of class of plains groundwater, and the promotion of native vegetation and water conserving methods. That motion has a second. So is there discussion on the merits of the motion? And again, this is just an affirmation. This is not changing language in the draft. A discussion on that motion? Okay, I'm not hearing discussion. I'll check one more time. Any any discussion? Okay, well, then we'll just go straight to a vote again. Affirmation, and I'll read it again, that the group affirms the draft policies as written, especially working with private landowners for long-term monitoring, the fragility of the class of plains groundwater, and the promotion of native vegetation and water conserving methods. Okay, I'll go through the group again and just ask for your vote. Carrie Johnson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jim Allegra, how do you vote?
Yes.
Robert Strickland, how do you vote?
Aye.
Cheryl Johnson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Oh, Charles Dice, how do you vote?
Yes.
Pat Corcoran, how do you vote?
Aye.
Nadia Gardner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jan Mitchell, how do you vote?
Aye.
Lam Kwan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, I believe that's unanimous support, then. I didn't miss anyone with that vote, did I? Okay, and I have that count nine to zero, so the motion passes. Thank you, Jim, for bringing that forward. So Lam, let's come back to you. You were interested in maybe adding a policy about roadside spraying, roadside spraying. Do you want to give, suggest language there?
Yeah, I would like to propose that county explore different options to roadside spraying. I know that there are different chemicals that can be used that they are, is more benign to suppress roadside vegetation. So, yeah, I guess that's my emotion there. That's
Gail, can can I just maybe add, because it was part of what Lam was just saying, options to roadside spraying to to limit, I'm not sure what we want to say, limit toxicity, limit damage to I don't know language there, Lam, if you have a particular thing that you'd like for that last bit. I just, I'm trying to direct what options we'd want to be looking for.
Well, I don't know if there's a limit, but to explore more benign options that are not so toxic to our river and groundwater.
Okay. So so Gail, thank, thank you for for trying to capture what we've got here. So we've got a motion as recorded that would be adding Policy U. The county should explore different options to roadside spraying to limit levels of toxins that may enter the surface and groundwater systems. But Lam, is that reasonable capturing?
I think so, yeah. That sounds, that sounds great.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second for that?
I second it.
Thank you, Jan. So we've got a motion and a second to add a Policy U. Is there a discussion of the policy as written? Or or amendments or anything like that? Jim?
I do know the state has a list of approved herbicides. So I can't imagine a county now using chemicals that are not permitted under under state state regulation. However, we may want to add something, discussions with the state for less toxic herbicides that can accomplish the same thing.
Okay, thank you for that discussion point, Jim. Any any other discussion on the motion? Okay, not hearing any. I think we can head to a vote on this one. So this is a vote on the motion to include Policy U, which would read the county should explore different options to roadside spraying to limit levels of toxins that may enter the surface and groundwater systems. So I'll just go around the table for a vote on this. Carrie Johnson, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Jim Allegra, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Robert Strickland, how do you vote on the motion?
Aye.
Charles Dice, how do you vote on the motion?
Aye.
Cheryl Johnson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Pat Corcoran, how do you vote?
Aye.
Nadia Gardner, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jan Mitchell, how do you vote?
Yes.
Lam Kwan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, I have a vote of nine to zero in support. So that motion is approved. Thank you, Mr. Kwan. Any other discussion points or motions on this, on the current section? This is groundwater resources.
Yeah, I I do.
Charles?
So I put in chat a concern. It may or may not be captured in Policy C. I'll let other people weigh in on that one. But really, the concern is is got to do with the fact that so much of the county is forest land. So much of the forest land is in private hands, Oregon Forest Practices Act regulates the practices on that land and The practices on that land and the current Forest Practices Act does not have. Any specific wording that requires the property owners to notify the watershed districts. As to exactly when they're spraying and what they're spraying. And I, that's a, that's a problem for me as as a water district system operator. And board member, it would be so much more helpful. If the timber companies would notify us as to when they're actually going to spray. So that we could perhaps turn off our pumps for people to use in surface water. Or for those of us that are using spring water, we might want to do a before and after. Chemical test to see if there's any, you know, any change in. The chemical composition of the water we're distributing to our customers.
So Charles, is there is there a motion in there that we should include a new policy?
Well, I, that's why I asked the question, because I presumably this committee has already spent some time and energy in policy C. I wasn't around for those discussions. If if the community believes policy C. Covers my concerns, then I'm happy to let it ride. If the community thinks we need a. A most, a another policy that's more specific about. This issue, then. You know, I'll dream one up.
Okay. Gail, you came on mic. Do you have feedback on that?
My feedback would be not necessarily in relation to policy C. But since the notification requirement is set in Forest Practices Act. I'm not sure that the as staff, we would want to take that additional obligation on. Also, I know that we have a representative here, and I think Lindsay is gone. But perhaps Chad, i- is this something that the water district and the the property owners could work out individually? Outside of Forest Practices Act without actually putting it into our comprehensive plan?
To answer your question, Gail, it absolutely is. We have always been open to any requests from water districts. We do notify all spray activities through the Ferns notification system as required by the FPA. The Ferns notifications are available to anybody interested. If the water district or water masters needed help figuring out how to get signed up. We'd be happy to walk them through that process, although I'm fairly certain that the water districts receive the notifications. For any activities done in their watersheds. And if not, we'd be happy to help them get signed up.
Yeah, so if I could just comment on that, I mean, that everything you said is true. The dilemma for us and for me as a system operator is I do get the ferns. But it 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 in terms of spraying, it gives a range, so it could be. You know, they don't give a specific day when they're gonna gonna spray. And whenever this comes up at the various meetings I've attended with the ODF and and the property owners, they all say they can't. Because of the, especially if it's aerial spraying because of the weather conditions. But my point is, is that if we're gonna, if we're, if the district is gonna spend the money to stop pumping. Or to do a chemical test before and after. It's it's really critical that we know exactly when it's gonna occur. And maybe that's something that, you know, we could just get a phone call or email that said, hey, you know, we sent our guy, the guys out to spray today. So fine, we can run out and take a sample and then, you know, a week later, you know, like if we're on a spring or something. A week or two later, whatever the recharge rate is, we can take another sample. That's the piece that's missing. It isn't that Ferns doesn't work, it's that Ferns isn't accurate enough.
So that is correct, Mr. Dice, that it is dependent on weather. And that's true whether it's an aerial application or a ground-based. We don't currently have any aerial spray program in Clatsop County. But even for ground-based applications, it does depend on the wind, speed and direction as to whether or not it's safe to spray. If you'd like more detailed information about what we're spraying, when we're spraying it and where we're spraying it. I would encourage you to reach out to me personally. I will drop my email in the chat and be happy to work with you on that. I think all of the other landowners that may have property in your watershed. Would be happy to do the same. So I will drop my email in the chat and you can save that for any future use.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, great. I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you for the discussion there. And any other comments, additions, motions for the groundwater resources section? Appreciate the constructive dialogue there, gentlemen. Let's, let's try to move on to Oregon recreational trails. And Cheryl for the comment that led to that strike through. Good catch. So Oregon recreational trails, any, any comments, feedback, motions on this section?
I think this is the one that. I want to make sure that the Ecola Oswald West and Fort Stephen State Parks trails. I was a little unclear, like. Yeah, so it talks about the Oregon Coast Trail and Saddle Mountain, but not those other significant trail systems.
Yeah, and I can address that. The, under OAR, the Oregon recreational trails are those that have been designated by State Park and Recs. And so the scenic trails are those listed here. It's Cape Lookout, a bunch of things around the state. Humbug Mountain, Oregon Coast Trail, which runs through Clatsop County, Saddle Mountain Trail, which is in our county. And then there are regional trails, but the ones that you're specifically talking about are not designated as official Oregon recreation trails. By State Park and Rec Department.
Yeah, I guess the Oregon Coast Trail does run through all three, actually. So maybe that 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 segment.
Policy, policy A does say Oregon Coast Trail.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on Oregon recreational trails section? Pat, did you have a hand or comment? Did I catch that earlier?
You did. And it relates to this tangentially, but mostly about the wild scenic rivers. There was, is the Nahalem, has it achieved some kind of status recently? I know there was something in the works. And is that incorporated in the plan?
Yeah, that's now a segment of it. Seventeen point five miles is now a state scenic waterway. And so we will be adding that to our inventory. They have not completed their management plan on on the river section yet. And then I think staff may have added. A policy. Maybe not, that says when that management plan is completed, then we would incorporate those requirements into our code as well.
So any any guidance on whether we should do anything preemptively and any of these other goals and objectives to accommodate that?
I would say not, because we don't want to conflict with anything that may come out of the management plan. And since we don't know what that is yet, I I would prefer not to.
Got it.
Thanks, Pat. Any other questions or comments on this section, Oregon Recreation Trails? Okay, let's try going down to natural areas then. Any, any comments, questions, motions for the natural areas section? Cheryl?
Minor detail, policy H refers to areas in northeast planning, which is my CAC. And just that they need to be included. Gail can advise on this. I don't know how it needs to be a policy. It it seems like it's just a cleanup thing that just simply needs to happen without being stated as a policy.
Gail, do you have feedback on that?
Yeah, we probably don't need it as a policy, because we will be adding it to the inventory, because we are required to.
Is there any objection from the group if if we just strike that policy H? Ending inclusion in the inventory anyway? So I'm now, Carrie, did you have thought about that?
I would agree with that.
Okay. Then I think we can safely take that off. Thank you for bringing it up, Cheryl. Okay, let's check again. Any any other topics we want to broach on? Natural areas or or motions for this section?
Oh, yeah, this is Cheryl. I I was gone for a few seconds there, but did somebody already mention the? Marine Reserve areas? Did they get included?
No, that that's not been brought up. Can can you restate your interest here?
Yeah, so when the original plan was done, I don't think there was any Marine Reserve in Clatsop County. We have one now. So I I think we need to recognize that either as an inventory item or. Yeah, probably as an inventory item as opposed to a policy.
Okay. Is there any comment or objection to to just including that in the Marine Reserve area? In the inventory for natural areas? Is that problematic in any way, Gail?
Yes, I think it may be under scenic and whatever goes with scenic views. We may have a look there or wilderness areas, but I think natural areas, if I remember correctly. Has some specific criteria that's laid out by OAR. Natural areas are those listed in the State Register of Natural Heritage Resources. So anything that's in there, we do have to list as as a natural area. But wilderness area is designated by federal, we can include it maybe under open space. Or scenic sites and views, but one of those two categories where we have more leeway in what we inventory.
That would be fine with me.
Okay. Any, any objection or thoughts from the group about that process, just staff trying to include Marine Reserve where appropriate in the inventory?
Yeah, and on that topic, the other, the other place I was seeing is missing is the Ecola Forest Reserve. Which is City of Cannon Beach owned, but is in county land. It's outside their urban growth boundary. And that is drinking water, but also wildlife focused. Wildlife and recreation. So I don't know where, we just want to, we just want to notice its existence somewhere.
So so I'll now expand this to, so. Inclusion of the Marine Reserve and the Ecola Forest Reserve, that's the correct term, correct term, right now, Nadia. Ecola Forest Reserve, where appropriate in the inventory. Any, any objections to those two inclusions? Okay, thank you too for bringing those those items up. Let's go, go back to the baseline here, which is any comments, questions or motions on natural areas? Okay, so the next item is wilderness areas. Any comments, questions or motions on wilderness areas? Pat Corcoran?
The the bit about cluster housing, that seems to be kind of a little bit odd in there. I see that as an objective kind of maybe to achieve something. It seems the next one is complimentary to that as far as open space, voluntary open space. Can I get clarification maybe from staff about the distinction between those two?
Oh, I don't hear you, Gail, sorry.
Sorry, the clustering requirement and the open space are both the existing policies in the comprehensive plan. So the clustering would be to preserve open space within a subdivision. And then there, then there's this voluntary open space acquisition program, which would be basically. And not necessarily as part of a subdivision, but maybe where people have put a conservation easement on part of their property to. Restrict development that can occur there. So that would kind of be the difference between the two. I don't, I'm not sure if I answered your question. I was reading while you were talking, so.
That's right. It it was from the previous comprehensive plan. And it's carried over and it's been kind of looked at since. So that's good enough for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
I have a question.
Sure.
So are, is clustering required as of right now? Because it was my understanding that it's not always required, depending on whatever zone you're in. It it can be done, but clustering is not necessarily a requirement.
No, it's only a requirement when we do density transfers. And that is primarily happening on the Clatsop Plains area, where we allow people to transfer. Residential units that could be built on an environmentally sensitive piece of, sensitive piece of property to a different spot. That doesn't have those same environmental concerns. And then we allow them to go to a smaller lot size, and then those lots are clustered together to preserve at least thirty percent. Of the open space within that subdivision. Other than with density transfers, we don't have a requirement that development be clustered, but it's always encouraged. For many reasons, not only the open space, but if I'm the developer who has to put the road in to serve that development. Or water lines or sewer lines or electrical lines, whatever you're running. You you will run less line and build less road and maintain that over the years. If you've clustered your development together on smaller lots, so.
To that. Gail, I agree. Gail, I agree with that a hundred percent. Usually it's more advantageous to cluster. I was just wondering if this is a new, confused by a policy B that says it's going to require subdivisions to be clustered when when it. They're not always necessarily required under zoning ordinance.
Yeah, so I will say, first of all, this is an existing policy. Second of all, the number of subdivisions we get, which under state law is when you. Divide off property into more than three parcels or lots. People don't usually do subdivisions, except in that Clatsop Plains area. Instead, what people do are serial partitions, and that gets them around this requirement. Where you basically come in one year, you partition your pop property into three parcels. You have a big remainder parcel, you come in next year, you divide that parcel into three more, and you keep going till you run out of land. So again, the only place that I've run into it, where it is required, is in the Clatsop Plains area. And it is only for subdivisions that have more than three lots created at a time.
Carrie, does that sufficiently answer?
Thank you, yes.
Okay, great. I, Nadia, go ahead.
I'm just taking a step back and looking at. Both natural areas and wilderness areas are focused at particular types of natural areas and and Oregon recreational trails too. And then we have. And then we have these policies which don't really have anything to do with the wilderness areas, right? So we don't, we don't have any federal wilderness areas in Clatseton County. And so it seems like Policy A and D makes sense, but the two in the middle, B and C, don't necessarily belong here. Am I wrong in that? Is there a more appropriate place for them? And then also the I was looking at also Policy K under natural areas where it talks about voluntary acquisition program around drinking water. Maybe that one actually belongs in groundwater resources if we don't have one already like that there.
And that's that's also in, that's G in wilderness area too.
Oh, yeah, I next page. Don't have that up here, so. It feels, well, some of it seem does feel repetitive and then it also feels like it's not necessarily in the right place.
Gail, do you have, I I know you're looking at the document too, but do you have response or thoughts about those item?
Yeah, so let's see, we're on wilderness areas. So this one, we can move to groundwater and then all right, let me let me make a comment first before I forget.
And and that's, I think, K and the one above in natural areas.
Okay, and then if we're looking at B, C, I would also pull Policy E out of there uh, because that also doesn't really have anything to do with wilderness areas. So possibly the removal of those three policies.
And are they somewhere else or where's a better place for them?
I mean, should those all just be moved to Goal 10 as policy? Which, that's housing.
G in wilderness is the same as K in natural areas.
Correct.
Right, so Policy K in natural areas and Policy G in wilderness. As staff, if everyone agrees, we'll just move those up. We only need to move on, but move that up to groundwater resources here in Goal 5.
Any objection from the group for that movement? Just to check.
No objection.
Thank you.
Just a question. Uh, like there on the creek there at Falcon Cove. The water isn't just groundwater, it's flowing water when it's available. Is there a, it's all drinking water. Is there anything that we're missing out on by demanding it be groundwater instead of trickling brooks?
This Charles Dyke, I'm not sure I understand the question. I mean, we.
Well, the the little creek that runs up to 101 and comes down next to the road. Uh, fast farm, mountain school and all. The, it it flows sometimes and the and the drinking water is the babbling brook, not just groundwater, it's surface water.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's that's the Elk Flat, that's the Elk Flat Water District and and you're you're correct, that is surface water.
Yeah, I I mean, I thi- I think that's a, Nadia brought up that distinction earlier too. You know, we've got, we've got both surface watershed, drinking water supplies and groundwater. And we're sort of lumping things into the groundwater section. While that may not fit terminology wise. Yeah.
We also have the ability in Goal 6, which is air, water and land resources quality to address surface water and pollution and clean water in Goal 6 as well.
Okay. Thank you, Gail. I'll I'll just check again though. Is there is there broad, is there any broad objection to moving these out of the natural and wilderness areas and into the groundwater section for for now? Okay, I'll go to the I I'll check separately. Is is there, so there was a separate issue that came up, which is these policies like, for example, what's Gail Gail is highlighting B, C and is it E? That are sort of housing related, or that's how I would characterize them. And may or may not belong in interaction with wilderness areas. They are also, I think those are broadly duplicative in the natural areas. Is that is that correct, Gail? I think the first two anyway, I think are.
No.
E and F.
Oh, E and F, yeah.
Do do we want to take those out of this section and put them somewhere else?
And they could, they could be moved in Goal 5 to our open, open spaces.
Okay, uh, any any objection to that plan? Jim, do you have thought on that?
Yeah, just a thought. No, I I read these and I I did scratch my head initially. Then I remembered that we had a discussion that it's okay to have some of these policies in more than one place. And I'm bringing this up, not that I'm convinced it should not be moved, but just for a discussion. Because I I can see where the the subdivisions, of course, you're you're they're not clustered, then you're going to take up more natural area. The the same is true of setting side areas and along drinking water area, drinking water places. You could see that as being providing dual dual function, one as a natural area, but also protecting drinking water. Uh, I'm bringing this up just just to have a discussion before we decide to move them. Because personally, I'm not sure which way to go on this. Maybe other people are are a little unsure as well. Uh, and I would appreciate a discussion on that.
Thanks, Jim. So I have a thought.
Charles.
So I can't tell you how excited I was to read Policy E because I I think that's great. Um, I I did scratch my head about why it's under wilderness areas, but as long as it's there, I guess I don't really care. Um, I don't have an objection to moving it as long as it gets moved intact to someplace more perhaps more meaningful or in more than one place.
I I will say that by my reading, open spaces already has at least as actually a more restrictive version of Policy E. It just flat says all subdivisions are going to be cluster development without the, without any carve out for anything else, any any notions about wildlife or open space or anything. It's just, they're all going to be this way. So like if that's your interest, it's solidly there.
Maybe I'm on the wrong page.
So that, so that.
I thought we were talking about Policy E under wilderness areas.
We we were, but the notion that Gail brought up was moving, moving those sentiments into the open space section, which is toward the end of the policies document. I don't know what page it is, Gail, that you're on right now. But I was just, I was pointing out that open space already has a a pretty restrictive version of it. That's on page thirty eight in my document. That just says all subdivisions will will be cluster. So so if, you know.
Oh, sorry, I I was talking about Policy E as an Edward, not B.
Okay, I'm just going back and reading that. I think we're talking about the same thing. I think we may be talking past each other a little bit, but.
Uh, my only, my only point was if we're going to move, I just don't want to lose it or change it. I I love Policy E and Edward just the way it is. And if it shows up here and it shows up in the open spaces place, that's fine too.
Okay. Uh, any any other discussion, objection, anything like that about consolidating these policies that are sort of duplicated in natural and wilderness areas into perhaps open spaces? For broad application. Gail, did you have comment?
Yeah, I want to correct something I said earlier. I've been going back, looking through our policy worksheets and so under natural areas, Policy E and F, those were new policies that were recommended. So I was wrong when I said that they were existing in our plan already.
Thanks for the clarification there, Gail. Okay, so I'm not hearing objection to this this movement anyway. So it sounds like as long as these sentiments are retained, we're okay with this as a group. Uh, thank you, Gail. Any any other comments or motions for the, we're on the wilderness area, even though or some of this is applying to natural areas as well? Any other comments on on what's left in the wilderness area section? Okay, let's try mineral and aggregate resources. Any comments, questions or motions for mineral and aggregate resources? And and I'll, I'm just going to circle back around. Chad, am I recalling right that you brought this section up earlier? Is this something that you had comment on or were you just wondering about process here?
It was a a question about process with all the concern around drinking water. You know, making sure there's not sediment delivery to streams. It seems like this is a really big area that has gotten very little attention compared to some of the other things that you have spent a lot of time on. So I'm just wondering what the plan moving forward is, if you're going to maybe look at prioritizing different things or just continue as is.
Okay, thank you. So so from the from the group, any any comments, changes, motions for for this mineral and aggregate resources section? Uh, I've got Jim and then Cheryl.
Well, I recall when we first approached this, we were quite frankly rather puzzled. And I believe we punted to the planning department to help consolidate those now. Gail, are these consolidated from the original ones from the nineteen eighty plan? Or are they still the nineteen eighty? I honestly can't recall.
Yeah, so the original plan, I believe, has twenty six or twenty seven different policies and then some in in one goal and then there are about six or seven policies in another goal. All that staff did was go through and review our existing policies against what's required in OAR and then made updates accordingly to that, whether it was to code citations or actual requirements. And I think those should be reflected in our table. But for the most part, the changes that we made were were pretty minimal. We didn't add any new policy issues, so.
Thank you.
Any any concerns or comments from the group on this mineral mineral and aggregate resources section? Oh, sure.
I really, I really appreciate Chad being here and and bringing this up. I think for a lot of us, this is an area of need for education. And I'll say from the planning commission standpoint, since I've been on a couple of years, we've just seen one significant mining operation come come through our our body, the expansion of the quarry between Seaside and the 101 26 Junction. And what was eye opening to me was the air quality challenges around that. And we had some neighbors tell us about the amount of dust in their air and on their property at all times, which was really amazing. And the fact that they were going twenty four hours a day in some instances. And and noise, of course, and strangely though, those neighbors were not upset about any of these things. And but then also, yeah, as you pointed out, like potential water quality impacts and what happens once those operations close. Which is not much. It doesn't ever go back to what it was before. And and there may be water quality impacts into, much into the future, even after their close. So it is something that I would like to learn more about and to really be careful. We should really you know, think think deeply about this going forward. Maybe, I don't know, you know, how we could improve this here, especially with our body of knowledge, but but I really appreciate Chad highlighting it for us that and and to remind us that there's a lot of different things that can impact both wildlife habitat and drinking water. And this this could be a big one depending on where these are located. And we have like the big ones, like the ones there that you you can see. And but we have a lot of small quarries, especially throughout the county and that you don't really know about until you stumble across them on your mountain biker, hiker, hunting trip. So thanks.
Cheryl, belatedly, I'm getting to you.
No problem. Um, this is a big one. And as I was going through this, I was amazed. Mineral and aggregate resources has thirty separate policies. The only ones that come even closer to that, something as important as groundwater has twenty policies and wildlife habitat has twenty policies. So this is a third, again, larger than anything else we've dealt with. So that's just an aside. I am not an expert on mineral and aggregate resources, but I do have a potential place for us to start. As I was comparing it to our Table 1 and reading through there. What on Table 1, what was originally policies nine, ten, eleven, twelve and thirteen? All referred to our staff recommendation is that they, number one, be deleted. And secondly, with the statement that this policy is no longer applicable. What that rolls over to in ours is that it would be policies I, J, K, L and M. So up for discussion. As a way to sort of begin to move us through this very big clump. I I wrote it over on the side. I'm suggesting that we follow staff recommendations and that we delete I, J, K, L and M as no longer applicable.
Before I go into treating that as a motion, I just want to check with Gail. Do you think Gail, do you think that that reading is correct and that Gail or the staff is willing to delete those without us having a motion on this?
Given that. Yeah, I think that's correct. I'm eyeballing it here, but I think Cheryl's correct on that one.
Okay. Second, then unless Cheryl Cheryl or other members of the group think that we need to go into distinct discussion on this. I'm I'm thinking that I'm hearing from from Gail that this is all removable anyway, because we did already decide on that. So we don't, we don't need to go further into it. I think that's a good catch, absolutely. But if if they're already slated for deletion, let's just let them go. Cheryl?
Just clarification. So the staff recommendation was to delete them, but at least the way I'm reading by Table 1, there isn't any discussion on here. So we as a CAC did not move to delete them. So and again, Gail can can help me clarify here if I'm nuancing this wrong, but I think it was simply a recommendation from staff, but there wasn't any vote by the countywide CAC to actually do anything with any of these. I'm not seeing any comments over here.
Yeah, none of the citizen advisory committees really got into the mineral and aggregate policies. So there were no recommendations from any of the committees.
Andy, so what I'm saying is that I think we do need a motion.
Okay, well, we can treat it as one. So I've got, I've got a motion that's on the table. I think Pat seconded anyway. So we've got a motion to basically agree with staff recommendations within the worksheets, which is to delete the relettered policies I through M in the draft reflecting staff recommendation of deletion in the original worksheets presented to the CACs. Is there discussion for that motion for deleting these items?
I have a question on staff reasoning. What's the reason for deleting them all? Just not necessary? Or maybe you can explain that one more time?
Yeah, so in my reading of the old documents, these policies seem to relate to a two-year period when the county was trying to bring all the existing mining and quarrying operations in the county into compliance with Goal Five back in 1980. And so they had a two-year window to go through and identify these sites and develop the regulations around them. And there were several categories that they were looking at. There were sites that had been identified, some that were potentially identified. And this was all completed 40 years ago. So there was really no point in continuing to keep these requirements in here for something, work that appears to have been completed probably 35 or so years after the plan was, 35 years ago.
Any other questions or comments, Jen?
I just, I'm thinking back on when we went through this. I think we were overwhelmed by the volume and it was clear that there at some point, maybe around 1980, and you're maybe pinpointing it, that there was a lot of focus on this. And the industry probably got involved and, you know, there were like five times the detail on this particular topic than there was on anything else. I think anything staff can do to make it more concise will be helpful.
Jen, Pat? Oh, you went in the wrong direction on the mute.
Sorry. I thought I read in the history of land use planning that aggregate mining was one of the main things that the land use planning was addressing along with forestry and ag. And there were some of those sort of overarching impetuses to have lots of policies in the aggregate. And it's what I understand from Gail is yes, that was the case and that's been taken care of and it's more streamlined now and we don't need to have all these particulars. Am I tracking?
Not necessarily that it's a more streamlined process, but that the process we needed to go through as a county 40 years ago to bring our existing mines and quarries into compliance with the new statewide planning goals, that work had been completed. And as we.
And this won't get us in trouble, and this won't get, and this won't get us in trouble by taking out something that was like a statewide mandate or anything like that. Thank you.
There is nothing in the OAR that talks about the policies that Cheryl's flagged, I through M, or nine through 12, whatever they work out to. These were set up in our plan to specifically bring our, our resources into compliance with the new statewide planning goals. And as far as I can tell, those have all been completed. And that's part of the reason, when you look at Goal Five, you see these lengthy staff reports that talk about like the Howard Johnson Mine and Quarry and all these other places. So that work's been completed. So there's no reason to keep these policies in here because as we've moved forward now, we've automatically had to comply with statewide planning goals and with any requirements that are coming out of Dogami or DEQ or any other state agency.
Excellent. So that's the whole purpose of this update is to weed out stuff like that.
Any further discussion on the motion to delete I through M? Okay, so not seeing any further discussion. I'll just go around and ask for a vote. Carrie Johnson, how do you vote on the motion to delete policies I through M from mineral and aggregate resources?
Yes.
Jim Allegria, how do you vote?
Yes.
Robert Strickland, how do you vote?
Aye.
Charles Dice, how do you vote?
Yes.
Cheryl Johnson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Pat Corcoran, how do you vote?
Aye.
Nadia Gardner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jan Mitchell, how do you vote? I think that was an aye, but you're muted, Jan.
Aye.
I'm Kwan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, I didn't miss anyone, did I? Okay, my count was nine to zero, so the motion passes. Any other comments, questions, or motions on the mineral and aggregate resources section?
Yeah, I've got a question, Andy.
Without objection from the group? Go for it, Chad.
So the fact that it was stated that not much happens to a mine after the rock has been extracted leads me to believe that there is a real misunderstanding or a lack of understanding around this topic. It's, you know, at least when you look at the number of policies involved, it could be argued that this is probably the most important or one of the most important pieces of Goal Five. So my question is, what have the CACs or the planning commission done to educate themselves to be able to advise on policy? I mean, the fact that Dogami requires an operating permit for each one of these quarries with a clear reclamation plan involving laying those slopes back to native slopes and planting of vegetation. I mean, there are regulations around this stuff and it seems like this was breezed over and there was no effort to try to educate themselves on what they're tasked with doing here. If I'm wrong, please let me know what efforts have been done to try to educate themselves on this.
Thank you for the comment, Chad.
Yeah, sorry, I was a little flippant about that and I apologize. You know, when I was, my education really has been, this is, you know, the planning commission is new to this part of the process, but my education was really around that very large mining operation between Seaside and 26. And I understand there are significant, you know, state and federal rules around what happens. And in that case, when they leave, there will be a very big hole left there, is my understanding. And we did get some education around that. Now, I think it's different in every case. So I think from a timber operation standpoint, it's significantly different than that. So there's a lot to learn and we're not experts. I mean, I'm not an expert, I'll just speak for myself. But, yeah.
Any other comments, questions, motions for mineral and aggregate resources?
Just that there was a marvelous tour given down at the quarry there at, up at Junction. Yeah, and just such an amazing, huge hole. You know, and I've forgotten the number of feet deep that they can go, you know, but the bottom of the quarry is so far below the water level, you know, it's just, it's just vast. And I know it's not your average situation, but as far as returning that to its natural slopes is kind of beyond, certainly far beyond my lifetime to imagine that. But it is one of the more interesting Platte County economic tours that I've ever been on. Just the vastness of the hole that you don't see when you're going along 101 and seeing the little piles of rock. It's just, period.
Cheryl?
I'm one of the oldest people on this group committee here, and I think I'm one of two people on this committee who was around when the original comprehensive land use plan was drafted 40 years ago. And my memory is not what it should be and certainly not from 40 years ago, but I don't have a memory of discussing the mineral and aggregate resources or drafting it. And because this is, to me, who has no expertise in this area, but to me, this seems to be very well-written, the language seems to be crisp and clear and clean. So my assumption, and is indeed an assumption, is that this was written by people who knew what they were doing. So Chad, not to put you on the spot, but are there things that you think are missing from here that are important that we have overlooked and not included? Are there major things here that you think are totally inappropriate and we should be looking at and pulling out? You're right. Speaking only for myself, I did not do a good job of educating myself on mineral and aggregate resources. And so it is, and I think that that's maybe why each of the individual CACs did not delve into it. We just did not feel competent in this field.
So Ms. Johnson, to be clear, I am also not the expert to provide the full breadth of information that a planning commission or CACs should be considering when drafting policy. What I'm concerned about is that when it comes to the mining and aggregate, the language was clear and clean and it was just accepted as such without any background information reaching out to industry, reaching out to Dogami. Yet with Goal Four, another area that I would argue that members of the CACs and planning commission may not have much background information or knowledge on, there was no hesitation to add all kinds of policy. So I'm just wondering why this was breezed over and accepted as is and other areas had a lot of time and focus with the same level of misunderstanding.
Gail?
So speaking only from a staff viewpoint, I just want to be very clear that the policies that were in the 1980 plan, aside from the ones that we've just recommended be deleted, are pulled almost verbatim from OAR. And when I went through to do the update on this, I reviewed our policies against OAR, which are up on the screen now, and I'll put the link in again, I put it in previously into chat. But the policies now reflect everything that's required in OAR. So I just want to be very clear that staff hasn't gone in just willy-nilly adding policies without any thought. The only policies that are there, except for the fact that we should review our policies every five years to identify, what did I say? The county shall review its acknowledged inventory of mineral and aggregate resources within five years of the adoption of the plan to make sure we're keeping it up to date. Everything else is coming out of OAR. So I don't think that we've added anything without any consideration or, I'm going to rephrase that, we have not consulted with anyone because we don't have an option. These are the things that we're required to do under OAR. So I apologize, Chad, if you feel that we've excluded potential stakeholders from our discussions here.
No apology necessary, Gail. Just when talking about policy, it would be nice to see some outreach to Dogami or industry by the CACs and the planning commission that are tasked with doing this update. It's not a criticism of staff.
Pat?
Yeah, and I think kind of a simple explanation of why more attention was given to Goal Four and forestry than mining is, you know, mining are very specific places, holes in the ground, often, you know, off the beaten path, where forestry, of course, is seen all throughout the counties. So I think that's, and these being public, you know, advisory councils, I think that's a large tree.
Thanks, Pat. We lost a little bit right at the end there.
All right, I got cut off and so I don't know where you lost me, but I think the forestry got more attention because mining are holes in the ground and not forests of trees. So number one right there. And that's all I would say.
Thanks, Pat. Any, any other comment on mineral and aggregate resources? Nadia, could you?
I have to respond to that for a second here, just that it is not the role of the CACs or the planning commission to reach out to industry or anybody. We're a receptive, like a receiving body. So we, anybody's welcome to come and visit our meetings at any time. It is the staff's role to organize, for example, all the workshops which we had. So like this, this process has been going on for two and a half years. And at the beginning, before COVID, we got together, you know, with all sorts of people packed in a room in the county for, for lots of different topics. And those were all staff organized, though some of them were requested by some of the members. But, you know, if, if you're criticizing the, you know, the, us not talking to Dogami, like it's a process question, not an individual question. And, and I feel like staff has done the best they can to try to be inclusive and try to get us the information we need. It's just a lot. So we appreciate your patience with the process.
Like, no, Gail, do you have comments? I see you're all muted.
Yeah, I just want to kind of reiterate what Nadia just said, that if there's a failure on the part of the committees, then it would, it would fall on staff, quite plainly. The planning commission, which is the Committee for Citizen Involvement, they have not been actively seeking comment. So again, any failure on this part will definitely fall on staff and I just want to make sure that's very clear.
Any, any other commentary or motions or questions about the mineral and aggregate section? Okay, let's try and move into the energy sources section. I just want to do a little time check. Make sure, is there, is there anybody that's needing a break at this point, post-lunch, bathroom break, anything like that? Or can we safely move into the next section? Not, not seeing or hearing anything, okay? Let's go into energy sources. Any comments, questions, or motions on the energy sources? Pat?
I guess I'm struggling with this one and it may be in energy, it may be here, but for policy A, an addition, and I could write this in the chat if it seems worthy, but for marine-based electrical generation, specific considerations shall be given for the potential impact on shoreline residents and public infrastructure from debris from these operations generated by a large earthquake and tsunami. So that's long-winded, but I wanted to articulate that for marine-based electrical generation to consider the potential of that becoming debris and brought ashore in a tsunami. I alluded earlier, not all of them do, most of them don't, but it's the kind of thing that can be overlooked.
Okay. Do you have, do you want to bring up a motion for that, Pat? Do you have motion language at the, at the fingertips? Oh, and you're muted at the moment, sorry.
Great, I'm, it's always better when I'm unmuted. Okay, so for this policy A, development shall be allowed to, I move that to be added to policy A, development shall not, shall not be allowed to impair the feasibility of potential wind generating facilities that site is identified as appropriate for such generation. For marine, this is about the appropriate, for marine-based electrical generation, specific considerations shall be given to the potential impact on shoreline residents and public infrastructure from debris generated by a large earthquake and tsunami.
Okay, thank you. It may be that you need to repeat that again because it seems like Gail has, has kept most of the front of that comment, but within last name.
Sure, I'll get it going. Thank you for, for marine-based electrical generation, specific considerations shall be given to the specific considerations shall be given to the potential impact on shoreline residents and public infrastructure from debris generated by a large earthquake and tsunami.
Thank you.
Still worried, but that's it.
Okay, so, so we've got a motion on the floor uh, for an addition to policy A, uh, to read for marine-based electrical generation, specific considerations shall be given to the potential impact on shoreline residents and infrastructure from debris generated by a large earthquake and tsunami. That captures it uh sufficiently, Pat. I think you were reading it, so that's pretty much verbatim. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay, uh, I've got a second from Cheryl. Thanks Cheryl. Uh, so any discussion on this motion? Pat, you let it off a little bit. Do you have any further uh, discussion points?
Sure, I guess I just opened it up to staff. I mean, again, the law of unintended consequences, this seems like something preventative. Uh, and hopefully will never, you know, be needed. Do you get any heartburn from that kind of uh inclusion, or I guess another question, or would it stand alone better in a different policy? Or is it an objective under a policy?
My initial reading would be that it might be a separate policy. Uh, policy A, it's basically saying the opposite of what you're saying. Uh, policy A is saying that my, my house and my infrastructure shouldn't cause any problems for your wind generation site, and your policy is uh saying somewhat to the opposite of that.
Got it, I understand. I was going to appropriateness in policy, the word appropriateness in policy A. And so maybe it is a separate policy, and so for me, um, appropriate for marine-based electrical. So it, 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 in, in policy A is, is the understanding of appropriateness. And I guess what I'm saying is that the marine-based electrical generation has a different uh, sort of standard of appropriateness. That does sound like a different policy.
Yeah, I, I can understand your point of view. I, I just, was my first take on it, so.
Nadia?
Um, I see also that Carrie Johnson has a proposed motion, uh, motion that is related, so maybe we cluster um, under a specific policy, any sort of marine renewable energy um, suggestions. Um, but I will note that um, you know, the county doesn't have control what happens in either state or federal waters, but they certainly have a voice, and so maybe this and that uh, suggestion, suggested motions, like maybe they you know, indicate that, that um, that the county shall work with state and federal agencies to, you know, protect county interests, and then these two are examples of that.
And I would even be okay if it was different, and, and even it just flag, at least it would just um, you know, acknowledgement given to potential tsunami hazards from marine-based electrical equipment. Um, for me, I'm, I'm like, I want the lowest bar possible, and at least just acknowledging uh, that potential for offshore devices. I'd like to see somewhere in some form, not so much as a dictate, but as something to consider uh when those decisions are. There's also the onshore. I mean, the, the devices do come onshore in the class of county into different places, so there is a little bit of, of county of voice on, on site in, I guess, but. Uh, you know, I, I'm in the mood to like withdraw my motion, Andy.
It, it belongs to the group at this point, so you don't have a choice.
Yeah, both know for me.
Um, but we can, we can certainly put this up to a quick vote. And if, if folks feel like either they don't like the language, uh, or this is an inappropriate spot, they can vote it out. Or if they like it and think your original idea was great, then they can vote it up. Uh, any, any further discussion on this before we go to a vote, though? Jim?
I, I, I do like having a policy on uh, what Patrick has mentioned. I also like the comment from, from Carrie, and I know that Cheryl mentioned about maybe pulling it out as a separate policy and being able to combine the two, or maybe once a sub bullet over, under the other, or maybe just two separate policies. One is what Patrick is proposing, and another one what Carrie is concerned about. Either way, I think good, I don't want to lose them.
Okay, uh, thank you, Jim. Any further discussion before we move to a vote? Jan?
I was thinking, I think we are all so much in denial about the coming earthquake and tsunami, that uh, it doesn't hurt to put something in policy that makes us kind of tiptoe toward what that reality is going to be and what we need to, how we can plan ahead to uh, to deal with things in advance, cause we're surely, we're just, I mean, seaside's doing that, Cannon Beach is doing that, but the county as a whole story is not doing that, and I, and so I think, so maybe there's some reason to include this in future thinking policy.
Thank you. Pat?
And we do have goal seven coming up, where the majority of this will be discussed. It just, I, it just pinged for me, and having thought about the offshore energy things, and uh, so it's much of a highlight. Uh, but as far as uh, a Carrie's ideas, there could be a separate policy about, shall look at local impacts of offshore electrical generation. One objective is impact on fishing community. Second objective, impact in the case of a tsunami. And maybe have it like a local impacts policy with a couple objectives that ping both fishing impacts and tsunami impacts.
All right, I, I will point out to the group before, uh, we should go to a vote on this particular motion.
Vote no.
But if you want to amplify something, we have a policy J, which is at the moment, specific to ocean thermal energy. But it has model language I think you could use for determining and evaluating impacts and benefits for Clatsop County broadly. You, you might amplify that by, by giving a non-inclusive, non-exclusive list, like Carrie's suggestion about uh, commercial fishing, or your suggestion about tsunami impacts. But I think you, you might work off. Um, any, any further discussion on this one before we go to a vote? Okay, uh, Gail, I'm sorry, do you mind going back up so I can just read the language in the motion? Um, okay, so we got a motion on the floor that is to insert in policy A under energy sources, the language for marine-based electrical generation, specific considerations shall, shall be given to the potential impact on shoreline residents and infrastructure from debris generated by a large earthquake and tsunami. Uh, that's a motion and a second. Uh, we'll go to a vote now, just go around the table again. Uh, Carrie Johnson, how do you vote on the inclusion of that language?
I think we'll have another uh, another motion, so I'm, I'm a no.
Okay, Kim Allegria, how do you vote?
No.
Robert Strickland, how do you vote?
Yay.
Uh, Charles Dice, how do you vote?
No.
Cheryl Johnson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Pat Corcoran, how do you vote?
Can you vote no on your own motion?
Yes, you can.
I think I'll vote no.
Nadia Gardner, how do you vote?
No.
Uh, Jan Mitchell, how do you vote? I think that was a no, but you're muted, Jan. Can you say it again?
No. No.
Well, I guess it's a no, going with everybody else's, but um, I think it's a good idea to uh, consider uh, for the future of the tsunami, um, in these uh, any new activities that, that we going to uh, have out there in the ocean.
Okay, thanks, sir. Uh, so I have a vote of two to seven, uh, so that motion fails. I think we had uh, Robert in, in the yay category as well, in, in my recollection. Um, if you're recording votes. Oh, that was a no from Robert? Okay.
Hey.
I, I still counted uh, two to seven. I don't know that we need to re- record the nays, but um, yeah, but the, but the motion fails. Um, okay, so we're back to discussing energy sources and policies as a whole. Um, I'm gonna go to Carrie, because I think uh, by order of operations, uh, Carrie, you had a motion in the chat. Uh, so Carrie, do you wanna speak to your motion?
Um, I would just like to see um, the impact to commercial fishing, and there could be things added to that list if uh, offshore energy proposals come in front of the county.
Okay, uh, so I'll, I'll read the motion as I've got it. If, if you have uh, language changes or anything that need to be done, uh, let us know, but. So the motion is uh, that impacts to, there will be policy P, uh, as recorded by Gail here. Uh, policy P, impacts to commercial fishing shall be minimized when considering offshore wind and wave energy development proposals.
Second.
And I have a second from Cheryl Johnson. Um, so further discussion on, on this motion? Or amendments. Uh, so Cheryl, you got a hand up?
I really like uh, this motion. I like it as written. I think that commercial fishing is so important to Clatsop County and so unique to Clatsop County. I'm lobbying for this to be a standalone. It's nice and crisp and clear and clean. Impacts to commercial fishing shall be minimized. So one vote for not mucking it up with anything else, just let it stand by itself, clear and strong.
Cheryl, any other discussion points on this? I'm, I'm pushing the boundaries of, of what I'm allowed to do here, but I might suggest someone amend to just take out wind and wave. Uh, because who knows what uh, energy proposals might come along in the next twenty years. Uh, and I think my preference would be we just speak cleanly to energy proposals offshore shouldn't interfere with commercial fishing, or do so with the least uh, amount possible, but I can't make that motion, so if you agree with that, fine. If you don't, that's fine, too.
I move that we make it a more generic naming of uh, the impact of offshore energy facilities. Instead of specifying which uh, propulsion method.
Okay, so.
I agree to amend my motion.
Okay, so I've got, so I've got a motion to, to amend the motion to just uh, read offshore energy facilities. Was that correct, Pat?
That sounds okay to me, inclusive.
Offshore energy facilities. Uh, impacts to commercial fishing shall be minimized when considering offshore energy facilities, is what I heard there. Uh, and then Carrie, was that a second for that amendment? Can I take?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on that amendment? Okay, let me just ask, is there any objection to that amendment? Okay, hearing no objection, uh, we'll go back to the main motion, which is to add a policy P, which now reads impacts to commercial fishing shall be minimized when considering offshore energy facilities. Uh, any further discussion of that motion or that policy? Okay, uh, I'm not hearing further discussion, so let's go to a vote. Uh, Carrie Johnson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Jim Allegria?
Yay.
Uh, Robert Strickland?
Hi.
Charles Dice?
Yes.
Cheryl Johnson?
Yes.
Pat Corcoran?
Hi.
Nadia Gardner?
Hi.
Uh, Jan Mitchell?
Yes.
I'm Juan. Uh, I got a thumbs up, uh, without objection, I'll take that as a yes. Uh, so I've got a vote of nine to zero. And the motion passes. Uh, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Uh, do we have any further motions? Or considerations uh, for energy sources uh, within this section of the complaint? Go five.
Uh, yes, I've got something I'm gonna send, send in chat, chat here. Uh, um. Um, uh. And it's, it's the tsunami thing again, from the tsunami. So I put into chat, uh, to the extent, so another should be Q, and I realize it's offshore, Nadia, to your point, but to the extent possible, the county shall consider the shoreline impacts from a tsunami on offshore energy facilities. I guess I would move that we add Q.
Okay. And I haven't seen it yet, but I think you're adding it. Okay, thank you, Pat. Uh, so I've got a motion uh, in chat at the moment, that is to add policy Q. Uh, to the extent possible, the county shall consider the shoreline impacts from a tsunami on offshore energy facilities. Okay, is there a second for that motion?
I second it.
Okay, thank you, Jan. Uh, so I've got a motion, a second, uh, that's on the floor. Is there discussion of, of this point brought up by Pat?
Can I just let you know, it looks to me like this is impacts from the shoreline on the energy facilities, and you might wanna look that.
It's the impact on the people. Uh, so it's the, 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 the shoreline impacts on residents and infrastructure from a tsunami. It, it, there's a lot of clauses in that sentence.
Right, and you might wanna switch the energy facilities to be the leading noun there, so it's the impacts on the, it's impacts from the energy facilities on the shoreline.
Generated from a tsunami.
Correct.
Excellent, thank you. Now, um, let's see, I'm looking over here at small. Gail, are you having any luck? The shore. Shoreline impacts. Well. But. I think the shoreline impacts on residents and infrastructure. There we go. From what was the next one, Carrie? From, yes, from energy facilities, yes, from an, an offshore energy facilities. Sort of in the event. Yes, in the event of a tsunami or something during, yes, that's fine. I think that does read much better, thank you.
Okay, um, let me, let me just poll the group here. Is there any objection to the changes that were just made? In service of clarity here, so the policy Q now reads, to the extent possible, the county shall consider the impacts on residents and infrastructure from offshore energy facilities in the event of a tsunami. Is there uh, any objection to those changes made to the motion? Okay, so I'm not hearing any, uh, Robert? Robert, I don't hear you yet, if you're.
Uh, consider the impacts from, in the event of a tsunami on that. Anyway, I'm, I'll stop word, wordsmithing. Just, just that it. I think where you can read it.
Thank you. Um, I, I think in, in service to um, to us not wordsmithing too much, I think there is a certain um, amount of trust we're giving to staff to make uh, small changes if needed for clarity. Uh, you know, we talked about that, that earlier in the document too, but I think that's true here as well. Um, okay, a- any discussion on the substantive part of this? Before we go to a vote here? Okay, uh, well, let's.
Andy, I just wanna plug it up too bad, but do you wanna specify facility or just production in general? Would there be any chance that there could be some negative impacts from the production that isn't the actual facility?
Oh.
Transplanting water, anything like that? Is it more generally to say production instead of facility?
I guess my concern was the metal bits floating offshore coming in, uh, you know, down along the north coast. Not so much uh, anything from the electrical product. That, that was just my thinking, but I, it could be, if it was oil or something like that, I think that would be it for sure.
Uh, unless there's an amendment from the group, I'm, I'm, I'm just gonna, I'll let this one stand for the moment. Okay, Chad, thank you for, food for thought there. Okay, let's, let's go.
Thank you.
It, it doesn't seem like, uh, it doesn't seem like we've got more discussion on the substantive point here. Uh, so let's go to a vote, uh, the, again, the motion now is that, uh, we would add policy queue. To the extent possible, the county shall consider the impacts on residents and infrastructure from offshore energy facilities in the event of a tsunami. Carrie Johnson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jim Allegria, how do you vote?
Yay.
Robert Strickland, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Charles Dice, how do you vote?
Yes.
Cheryl Johnson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Pat Corcoran, how do you vote?
Yes.
Nadia Gardner, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jan Mitchell, how do you vote?
Yes.
Lam Quan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, uh, so I have a nine to zero, motion passes. Thank you all. Any, any further issues, questions, comments, motions, uh, for the energy section here? Nadia?
Policy I identifies Clatsop Plains and Lewis and Clark only Waluski as potential wind generation facilities. But the current, uh, proposed sites actually towards Westport on the Columbia, which is also a very windy place. Um, you, you know, there's a lot of science around where they're cited, but I wonder about just, um, taking out the, those specific locations and just saying, um, identify possible sites that could be candidates for wind generation facilities, leaving it more general.
Gail, uh, can we just poll staff here? Is there, is there any known reason why it would be limited to those, those two sites, two sections?
No, uh, those two citizen advisory committees specifically called out places in their planning areas, uh, but that was the only reason why.
Okay, uh, so, so Nadia, uh, should I take that as a motion to?
Yeah, I guess, if, if, yeah, I'll just do that. Um, and I move to amend policy I to, um, remove the words within the Clatsop Plains and Lewis and Clark only Waluski planning areas.
Okay, okay, so we've got a motion to amend policy I to delete, uh, within the Clatsop Plains and Lewis and Clark only Waluski planning areas. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay, uh, I think that was Pat, though I saw a hand from Lam as well. Any discussion on this deletion? Okay, I'm not seeing any discussion, so I'll just, I'll just restate the motion again. Uh, so this is in policy I under energy sources to delete the words within the Clatsop Plains and Lewis and Clark only, only Waluski planning areas, so that policy I would read, identify possible sites that could be candidates for wind generation facilities. Carrie Johnson, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Jim Allegria, how do you vote?
Aye.
Robert Strickland, how do you vote?
Aye.
Charles Dice, how do you vote?
Yes.
Cheryl Johnson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Pat Corcoran?
Affirmative.
Uh, Nadia Gardner, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Jan Mitchell, how do you vote?
Yes.
Lam Quan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, I have a vote of nine to zero, so the motion passes, thank you. Okay, uh, back to the group, any, any other items for energy sources section? Cheryl?
I just wanted to, uh, point out on, uh, policy L, again, just a, a little background and process to share with you all. But this refers to a small scale solar installation on agricultural land. And I, I just wanted to share with you all that, um, this was proposed to the Northeast CAC by my neighbor Ed Johnson, who is a longtime farmer, uh, in Clatsop County. He, at one point, raised the corn for brown sweet corn feed. He has raised lots of crops, um, currently has the pumpkin patch where the kids go to and has always raised sheep. There was an article in a national magazine talking about, uh, solar installations, small ones, and how well they worked with agricultural land and how it benefited both of them. And so we took it up at the Northeast CAC and then took it to the countywide CAC. So I just wanted to point out that that's where this one came from. This was one of the policies that was objected to by one of the county commissioners. But I just wanted to share the background that it, it did come as a recommendation, um, from a local farmer.
Sure. Any other items for consideration, uh, for energy sources? Okay, uh, so I'm not hearing any, so that would move us on to cultural areas. Um, I'll, I'll again, just pull the group, i- anyone need a break at this point, uh, 2:31? Okay, so I'm not seeing any hands or anything, uh, so cultural areas. Uh, anyone have things to mention, uh, motions, et cetera, uh, for cultural areas? Jan?
I think staff needs to go through the policies and either use inclusive terms for, uh, the local and, and the recognized tribes or, um, or, or spell all of them out, but, but this varies from item to item.
Okay.
I, yeah, I, I don't understand why a seat should be preserved on the county planning commission for the tribe across the river.
Okay. Any other items from the group on cultural areas? Cheryl?
Just referring to what I wrote on the side over there, um, I don't have wording, but I, I would like to see us make a motion, um, in which we all agree on the language. And, and we've hashed this out many times, so I, I think we have agreed on the language. But whatever language we agree to, um, that we would all agree to that and then that we would state clearly that it would be used, um, throughout the comp plan. And we don't want to continue to revisit this, I, I agree with Jan. So I'm thinking that if we come up with one clear motion stating what the language is and stating that it is our intent that it be applied throughout the document, then maybe we can put this to rest. Um, and I'm open to language from, from somebody, I don't have a motion in mind.
Okay, thanks, Cheryl. Okay, does anyone happen to have a motion to that extent?
And I haven't devised a motion, but I think what we're dealing with is either you spell out each of the groups or you go by, um, what the federal government does and that's, that's go through the recognized tribes. So I think those are your two alternatives. Or, or you just use Native Americans, local Native Americans.
Robert?
As I think, Benny, you're aware, this is an old issue. And there, and it's a very deep issue. There's a whole lot of bad blood that goes back at least to the Lewis and Clark by Centennial or whatever it was. Um, and, uh, I, I think as much as we can sidestep this now, the better off we are.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
I, I wish I was, I wish it wasn't 2:30 in the afternoon to come up with a motion. I liked what Cheryl said, to affirm the respect right off the bat and then acknowledge that we're going to use a broad and inclusive term like Native American. And then, Robert suggesting, leave it at that.
I think Nadia may have done it on the chat.
Yeah, I mean, I would love it if it was just like local Native American tribes, but like somewhere at the beginning, the county, um, you know, spends a little more time talking about it so that it's really clear. Um, you know, maybe even naming those potential tribes. Um, but I, I would hate for it to become, um, lost, the, the unrecognized tribes, um, for, for reasons that are mentioned. So to, it's very important to me that, um, that the county, uh, doesn't limit their consultation to federally recognized tribes excluding our local two. Yeah.
Okay, um, I'm just gonna poll the group, is, is there, is there a motion to come out of all of that?
Is it possible, um, uh, Director Hemrickson to, to do that? Have a little section at the beginning and then through, and then have in parentheses, local Native American tribes? And then just use local Native American tribes throughout the document?
Yeah, I liked your suggestion, suggestion, Nadia, and I actually noted it down. I don't know where exactly it'll fall in the narrative, but it'll end up in there somewhere.
Yeah, because the local part is a little tricky too, like whether to use like usual and accustomed lands or all that. We could run some language by local expert Doug Doer if we had some.
So do we want to go forward with the, I mean, it sounds like Gail has taken down a note, uh, to, to, um, adapt some of the things we're talking about? Do we want to make a motion affirmatively stating something? Or, uh, are you, you happy to entrust that to staff? Uh, I saw Jan first, but I see Cheryl too. Jan?
Well, I'll give it a try. I moved that we request staff to include in the document, uh, a discussion of local tribes and then use local Native American tribes, whether they're really recognized or unrecognized in policies as they apply throughout the document.
Second.
Okay, um, Gail, I think that language is, she was reading directly from Nadia's comment. At the end there. Uh, so I've got a motion and a second, uh, to request that staff include discussion of local tribes, uh, in, in the document and, uh, use local Native American tribes, both federally recognized and unrecognized throughout, um, the rest of the document. Is that capturing, uh, your, your motion correctly, Jan?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, is there, is there a discussion or amendment on the motion? Nadia?
Just as a clarification, I guess I would say, just to keep it tight, I would just say local Native American tribes throughout the document, but have described in that section at the beginning that, um, that includes both recognized and unrecognized.
I agree.
Yeah, okay, so that's, I think that was the original intent, so just to use local Native American tribes. Throughout the.
So I'm just gonna, very quickly, um, so I'm taking that as a motion to amend to take out both federally recognized and unrecognized for the portion that's throughout the document. With the second by Jan, is there any objection to, to removing that portion from what's gonna be mentioned throughout the document? Any objection to that, just amendment? Okay, uh, hearing none, thank you for, for suggesting that change. Uh, I'll also note that I don't think it's part of this amendment, but Pat has maybe suggested some, some sample language, uh, for like introductory comment on, on this front. Gail, if that's helpful. Okay, any, any further discussion of the amended motion? Okay, and, and I, I do want to know, I think the intent, Gail, I, I imagine that you got this too, but I think the intent is still to include recognized and unrecognized as a concept broadly in document, but just not in the repeated bit that gets put in every place where we need to mention Native American. Okay, let's, let's go to a vote on this one then, because it doesn't seem like there's more discussion necessarily. So I'm just gonna restate the motion. Uh, the motion was to request that staff can include discussion of local tribes in the document and then use local Native American tribes throughout the rest of the document. Uh, so I'll go around the table for votes. Carrie Johnson, uh, what is your vote on this?
Yes.
Jim Allegria, how do you vote?
Yay.
Robert Strickland, how do you vote?
Aye.
Charles Dice, how do you vote?
Yes.
Cheryl Johnson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Pat Corcoran, how do you vote?
Yes.
Nadia Gardner, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jan Mitchell, how do you vote?
Yes.
Lam Quan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, I have a, I think I got everyone, did I miss anyone in that vote? I think I have a vote of nine to zero, uh, so the motion passes. Thank you for the little discussion there in the motion, folks. Any, any other items for us to take up in cultural areas? Okay, uh, I'm not seeing it or hearing anything else for cultural areas. Let's move down to historic resources. Any discussion amendments, uh, motions for cultural resources? Or, excuse me, for historic resources, cultural is the last one, historic resources. All right, it was off screen, did I miss anything? Anyone have items for discussion for historic resources? Jim?
Uh, I'd just like to point out to the group that there was a question on what is a certified local government uh, by one of the commissioners and in the email this morning and, uh, hopefully to the, to the commissioners as a whole. I've written up, uh, information straight from the National Park Service, who really administers this program and ship always, uh, ministers that at the state level, uh, to be more informative. But, uh, just to let you know on that, thank you.
Yes, there was also a workshop, uh, right before the pandemic shut everything down that we held at the Boynton Building in March of 2020 about this very topic as well.
Thank you, Jim, thank you, Gail. Any other mo- motions or points for discussion on historic resources?
Pink goes away.
Sorry, Robert, what, what was that?
Uh, the pink part here disappears or gets, changes into whatever we just said. There's, it, it, we, we don't mention those two groups.
I think my understanding was Gail just highlighted that again to remind her to, that that would be also replaced language.
Yes.
I think that's also tru- that there's another section in C, maybe C?
Yeah, F.
Or is that, well, wait, is that? I mean, that one may, is that one specific to the Chinook Indian Nation? I don't, I don't, I don't happen to know the history of the false paper, or pulp mill or the, or the sawmill mentioned there.
I don't either.
I mean, there, there, it may be perfectly appropriate to mention a specific tribe linked to a specific air, uh, site, but.
The Chinook Indian Nation was not included in the original policy and that was a request that was added, uh, by the Clatsop Plains Citizen Advisory Committee.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification, Gail. Jan?
Do we know why?
Yes. Yes.
Could you share at all, Robert?
Uh, because that was where their tribe routinely, uh, gathered to fish. Uh, out there at Young River Falls.
Um, well, I think that's quite, that's debatable. Anyway, I think that's another, that's another instance of where we ought to be, um, using broad language rather than specific.
If, any other points for, for discussion or motions for historic resources? No. Make public comment? Okay, not hearing any. Let's try to go down to open spaces then. Okay, so open space. Any, any discussion or motions on open space?
So here we are with cluster developments again, is that, I think it's the same answer that Gail gave last time about the reference to the specific reference to cluster development right off the bat.
Why is it called Chinook Washington when Chinook, any, no, Native Americans don't have their respect?
Pamela, are, are you wanting to make public comment?
Yeah, why is Chinook Washington called Chinook Washington if they're not respected?
What? I don't know the answer for that, Cheryl or Pamela. But, okay, let's, uh.
Chinook Washington is called Chinook Washington. And I have no idea why you don't recognize them as a tribe. I'm, okay, I'm kind of confused because the Chinooks here traded all over the Columbia River.
Pam, I'd be glad to talk to you about it personally away from this committee, so we can go ahead with our work.
I, I. Go ahead, go ahead. Okay, thank you. Bye.
Okay, uh, so open space, I think, uh, Pat, to your comment, my understanding earlier was the, the items that were noted in, uh, natural areas and wilderness areas were going to be moved to this sector consolidated to open space. Is, is that understanding correct, Gail, uh, from what you took down earlier?
Yes, that's also my understanding.
Okay, so that, uh, I don't know that there was a decision, uh, reached on whether or not the language here for policy A, um, supersedes the language from the other sections or not. It was slightly different, but I think all, all were toward cluster development, at least in that, in one policy. Uh, it, any comments or questions about this particular section though? Oh, Carrie? Uh, Carrie, do you want to, to speak to the motion that you just put in chat?
Um, I do. I'm speaking specifically about the Columbia River, um, commercial gillnet fishery. That is, seems to be constantly needing defending from state agencies. Um, that Clatsop County has been working to defend. Gill netting on the Columbia River is one of the oldest continuing industries in the state of Oregon, and we'd like to, be able to continue working in that industry here. Um, it's most culturally significant and historic, so I think it's worth noting in, uh, that section.
Okay, so, so I've got a motion, uh, to insert a policy M, which is Clatsop County shall seek to work cooperatively with state agencies to protect culturally significant and historic industries. Yeah, okay, is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Cheryl. Uh, so any discussion on, on this motion or amendments to it? Pat?
I mean, I like the intent. Um, I mean, to protect the industries. I mean, it's fairly, you know, general, not, not many objectives, but I think like some other things, it's good to have that written down.
Any, any other comments?
I guess I would just wonder, uh, Carrie, did you want gillnet fishing to be specifically in there, or was it specifically left out?
I don't know that it needs to be specifically in there. Um, I'm okay with leaving it generic.
Uh, I'm sorry, I paused there for a second and went off screen. So, so this is just a, a language question that I'm bringing up, and I don't know if this body wants to delve into this or not. Uh, I don't know if it's significant, uh, to say industries here versus something like, uh, sites, um, or artifacts, you know, like, there is a gill netting industry. It is, uh, culturally significant in this area. Are, are we saying we should, um, protect the industry or protect the sites? Maybe we are saying we wanna protect the industry. Uh, I, I just, I'm stating that that's my reading of it at the moment, uh, which is distinct from the rest of, uh, the policies here, which are mostly about sites or items, something like that, right? Again, the, you know, do with that what you will, but. Pat?
Maybe a question for staff. Um, is there something in our goal nine, our economic development, uh, goal that this would slot in nicely with? And specifically state gill netting, maybe?
Yeah, goal nine would be one possibility. I'm reading the OAR about historic resources. And OAR defines historic resources as buildings, structures, objects, sites, or districts. Um, and there really isn't a good definition of cultural, um, but maybe cultural resources, that might work.
I mean, again, I think it may be perfectly valid for us to say this statement in general. Uh, or to even call out gill netting specifically. I, I'm, I'm not positive. My feeling aligns with this particular portion, but.
I, I'm not sure this is the right place for it either, but, um, I'm okay with leaving it in just as it's stated right here.
Okay, well, I'm certain, I'm certainly happy to, to go to a vote on it. Uh, any, any further discussion before we do that? Yeah, Gail?
Yeah, so I'm reading, uh, what Lisa Phipps had put in about cultural resources, and even though it's focused on Native American, um, the, the Native American point of view. Uh, it talks about cultural areas, which are sites that are used for activities and food gathering. And to me, gill netting and those types of industries are part of a, a, a cultural resource more than a historic resource because they are something that's endemic to the culture and they're, they're, they're still ongoing as much as they can, some, some industries. And, um, so I, cultural resources might be a better spot for it.
Uh, rather than historic resources? Okay. Um, well, if I don't hear amendment from the group, we, we can go ahead with it as is.
Yeah, I guess I, I, I would move to amend, um, that, uh, a friendly amendment of that this go to cultural resources and not historic resources. I just wonder what Carrie has to think about that.
I'm, I'm okay with that as long as it's in there.
I think I heard a second from Robert on that. Is that correct? Okay. Uh, so I've got a, I've got a motion to amend just to move this policy, uh, and, and presumably re-letter it, uh, up into cultural resources rather than historic resources. Uh, is, is there any objection to, to the movement of this policy into cultural resources? Okay, uh, no objection heard or seen, uh, so I think that, uh, that carries. So we've just got, I don't know what the, the letter is going to be now, but, uh, so we've got a policy, which is Clatsop County shall work cooperatively with state agencies to protect uh, culture, I think is culturally significant and historic industries, yeah. Uh, just checking one more time, any more, any more discussion on this policy in cultural areas? Robert?
No, they're just preparing for an I.
Okay, all right, uh, let's, let's go around for a vote then. Um, Carrie Johnson, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Jim Allegria, how do you vote?
Aye.
Robert Strickland, how do you vote? Charles Dice, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Cheryl Johnson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Pat Corcoran, how do you vote?
Yes.
Nadia Gardner, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jan Mitchell, how do you vote?
Yes.
Lam Kwan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, uh, leave by vote of nine to zero, the ayes have it. Um, we can recommend that new policy. Thank you, Carrie. Okay, um, well then, uh, unless I hear s- something else that moves us back up, uh, I think we're in open space. Uh, any, any suggestions for open space? Oh, uh, I see in chat a request for a five-minute break, uh, by Cheryl. Uh, let me just, uh, just remind the group, we've got two sections left really, uh, open space and scenic views. Uh, so, uh, I think our, was our timeline to four today, uh, Gail?
Uh, five o'clock.
Five, okay. Uh, so i- is there any objection from the group for us taking a five-minute break now and then coming back to open space? Any objection to that? Okay, uh, well, let's all get up and stretch our legs, use the bathroom, et cetera. We'll come back at three oh three.
This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you. Okay, uh, so coming back to open space and I'll just, uh, open for discussion or motions again. Uh, anyone got anything for the open space section here? I'm just gonna make one, one last check here, and we can certainly come back to it if, if we've missed anything. Uh, but any comments or amendments for open space? Okay, uh, so Nadia, I see that you have, uh, something in the sidebar here for scenic views. Uh, do you wanna speak to that quickly?
Um, just as, just as discussed, um, in the background, um, document, I wanted to add, um, these really important, uh, state parks and recreation areas as scenic resource, as potential scenic resources for inventory under policy E. So.
Is that just a repetition of the inventory that is, that is in the preface for current conditions? Is that correct?
Uh, the inventory, these are not in the inventory, the current inventory, um, but we talked about it under, on page 11, when there is a discussion about scenic, there's the same list that's in policy E is there, so I had suggested it in that list, but this is the actual policy, so.
Great. Okay, uh, so, so we've got a motion to include, uh, the list that Gail has, has just inserted here, which is Oswald West, Ecola State Park, Fort Stevens State Park, Saddle Mountain, Arcadia State Rec, and Hood Point State Rec into this list of, uh, sites for the scenic, uh, policy. Uh, is there a second for the inclusion of those sites?
Second.
Okay, so Jim has seconded. Thank you, Jim. Um, any discussion of the inclusion of these additional sites on the list? Um, that, that is scenic views and sites. Any discussion on this? Okay, um, so not seeing or hearing any discussion, so let's just go around for a quick vote then. Um, Carrie Johnson, how do you vote on the inclusion of these new sites?
Yes.
Jim Allegria, how do you vote?
Aye.
Robert Strickland, how do you vote?
Aye.
Charles Dice, how do you vote?
Yes.
Cheryl Johnson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Pat Corcoran, how do you vote?
Aye.
Nadia Gardner, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jan Mitchell, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Lam Kwan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, by vote of nine to zero, that passes. Thank you, Nadia, for bringing us current to the previous list. Any other comments, additions? Uh, Gail?
Was this a section where Charles had also recommended adding the Marine Reserve?
I believe that the conclusion we came to was that you would add it, uh, where appropriate. Uh, this may be, uh, the appropriate spot. Um, so if you, if you think that this is the place where it fits, I, I, unless there's objection from the group, I think we could put it in. And, and I believe that, uh, that was inclusive of, uh, Ecola Forest Reserve two, if I recall, when we discussed that earlier. Thank you. Thanks for asking about that, Gail. Any, any other items from the group, uh, for scenic views and sights? Cheryl?
Minor correction, if Eagle Sanctuary could be Twilight Eagle Sanctuary.
Uh, without objection from the group? Okay. Thank you, Cheryl. Any other items here? So I'm not seeing any hands or hearing discussion. Uh, Gail, do we need to? Do we need to comment in, any at all on the, the last piece that you, you sort of had on the screen briefly there, but that's just sources and materials, correct? Okay, um, is, is there anything, uh, Robert?
Cape Falcon Marine Reserve, is that the correct name?
Ah, okay. Uh, any, any objection from the group for Cape?
Oh, that is the correct name, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Robert.
Yep.
Um, anything, anything else that we need to handle before we go to public comment, Gail?
Uh, let me look at my agenda. I think I have information or we have discussion points after that. Yeah, I, I'll do my remarks under closing comments.
Okay, we, we've handled the substantive part of goal five, though.
Yeah.
Great. Um, Cheryl, did you have a, a point before we go on?
Um, are we gonna, uh, review Exhibit D? Climate change subcommittee recommendations?
I think I had incorporated those into the relevant ones. Um, this included all of them, but you'll see on Exhibit D when we put this together and it was reviewed by the countywide Citizen Advisory Committee, they had spelled out specific goals where the policy should be located. Uh, so the ones that were relevant to goal five, I did put in. Uh, but if, I guess if there are others that the committee wanted to pull from that list and add to goal five, we should go through it then.
Cheryl, did you have any particular concerns for the goal five section there?
No, thank you for the clarification, um, Gail, that's excellent. I started to read through it and I said to myself, well, these are already in there. And then some of them I said, no, they aren't there, and then I got confused, but that process. well, these are already in there. And then some of I said, no, they aren't there. And then I got confused, but that process makes sense. Thank you.
Thanks for the questions, Cheryl. And any other, any other items to bring up before we head into public comment for the substantive part of goal five? And then we'll have closing comments from the group and everything after public comment if you want. Okay, so not seeing any. Let's move to public comment. So this is another opportunity for members of the public who would like to speak to us about materials we've covered or our process here. To speak up, we'd ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. But any members of the public are welcome to speak now. Anybody want to make a public comment? Okay, so not hearing or. Oh. Phil, did I see that, you know, you came off mute?
Yeah, thanks. Just from Camp Riley and the Department, we're just very happy to be part of this process. And for me, this is a new thing, being part of this, the level of detail that the committee's putting into this. The council is, is amazing just to be part of it. So thank you for letting us get our nose under the tent. It's great to see this. Thank you so much.
Thank you for joining us today. We appreciate it. Robert, I'll let you get closing comments in just a second, sir. And if you want to address that, you're welcome. Any other public comment at this time?
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody for their patience and participation today. It's been a really long meeting. And also that I thought the issues around the indigenous peoples, how they're recognized throughout this document was handled very well. And likely to not cause undue burden for the county trying to take sides in a very complicated issue.
Thank you, Chad. Thank you for your input today too. And, and Cheryl, thank you for the, for the comment. That's nice of you. Okay, I think that's all the members of the public that are with us. So let's head into closing comments. Gail, I'll let you lead off here since it sounds like you might have some staff notes.
Yeah, we just need to set our time for our November meeting. The date is already set at November 23rd, which is two days before the Thanksgiving holiday. So I guess maybe we do need to look at that. And then we will be discussing goals six, which is air, land, water, resource quality. Goal eight, which is recreational needs and goal 13, which is energy conservation. So I, we need to determine how much time we think we will need to go through those three goals and then set our starting time accordingly.
Thank you, Gail. Any feedback from the group on, on best starting time? Were, were folks happy with the nine AM this morning? Should we go earlier, later? What's the thought? Nine AM? I've got a couple thumbs up and a nod maybe for nine AM. Any objection to nine AM? Okay, I'm not hearing objection anyway. Let me ask, is there any objection to, to the date, even, even though, as Gail said, we, we had said it, but I don't know that that was thinking about the holiday time. Any, any problems or objections to us meeting on the 23rd? That was the date you said, correct, Gail?
Correct.
Any, any problems or objections to the 23rd at nine AM? Okay, I'm not hearing anything. So Gail, I think we're, we're safe on that one.
Thank you.
It sounds like an ambitious agenda, but I'm sure we will take it on and succeed as best we can.
Okay, could you, could you just repeat the goals that will be covered on the next, next meeting?
Yeah, it's goal six, which is air, land, water, resource quality. Goal eight, which is recreational needs. And goal 13, which is energy conservation. And given how efficient you all were today, I'm sure that you'll be able to get through those in no time next month. So.
Any, any other questions for Gail about the, the scheduling or content for next session? Gail, do you have any, anything else for us?
Yeah, just one other item. Coming up on November 3rd during the board's work session, which begins at 10 AM, they'll be doing an initial review of goals seven and nine, seven being natural hazards and nine being economic development. And neither of those goals have been covered by our citizen advisory committees before we took our paws. So this is all new territory that we're going to be entering. So it may, if anybody's able to tune in or watch the video afterwards, it may be useful for everyone as well. And that's everything that staff has. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Gail. Let me just go around the table and check with people if they've got closing comments for today. Carrie, do you have anything you'd like to speak to before we wrap up?
Nothing for me. Thank you, everyone.
Sure, thank you. Jim?
Yes, I do. Robert, you mentioned earlier that this is your last meeting. I would like to thank you personally for, for your, especially for your insight on, on what has happened in a county and, and providing a historical perspective since you've been active for so many years. I do hope our path would cross and we can, we can have further chats on a variety of topics unrelated to the CAC.
Thank you for your kindness, Jim.
Robert, would, would you like to, you're next on my screen. Would you like to make closing comment?
Minimally. It's so often easy to sound snarky when you use a term that is accurately used. But my, the outcome of tomorrow evening's final item on the agenda is predetermined. I, I was, you know, it's, it's one of those oddities that usually we understand that workshops are not a place for action items. But that does not seem to be understood by in county governance. It's also not normal to have an outcome of a skill denied to be predetermined by basically votes of a majority of county commissioners before the item has, has even come before a body. So I, I shall not be snarky. I, I shall just say that I really have appreciated being with this wonderful cadre of people. And love you all and I'm looking forward to a break from the weirdities of county politics. And you all are great. Love you all. Look forward to crossing paths and I'm looking forward to my vacation. Thank you, Jim, and thank you all.
Thank you, Robert. Charles Dice, do you have closing comment?
Sorry, I do not. Thank you.
Thanks, Charles. Cheryl, do you have a closing comment?
Yes, uh, thank you to Andy for an outstanding job of herding cats today. Well, I thought we got a lot of important work done in a very short period of time. I could not keep us on the agenda and juggle all the comments on the side and call on people and you do an excellent job. And vouchs to to our wonderful Gail, who continues to answer questions, even though she just answered them last week or yesterday or the day before with patience. And to continue to clarify the process for us and to continue to, to clean up and smooth out this process so that we are getting more effective and more efficient as, as we go. And Robert, you're one of the gray hairs on this committee and I will miss your history and your wisdom.
Pat, do you have closing comment?
Oh, okay. Thank you, Gail, Andy, and Robert. I have never been to a meeting with Robert Strickland where I didn't learn something new and interesting and relevant. And we'll definitely have to tap those resources in the future.
Nadia?
Just echoing what everyone else said. Thank you to all of you volunteers and our staff, Gail Hendrickson, but the other staff that stand behind her and have been such heroes during this very long, difficult process. Thanks.
Thanks, Nadia. Jan?
I guess I want to say that I thought we were going, it was going to be difficult for us to work with the planning commission because our charges had been so different. But I, I found it amazingly easy to work with the planning commissioners and I'm, I'm very thankful for all of your quick responses when I'm, I'm tired and muddled. I went to James Taylor concert last night and got home at two in the morning. But I, and I want to thank Robert and I missed the first part of this meeting, so I don't know what he's doing. But Robert is the person I've known in this county longest and there's a little story behind that. And I, so I'm gonna get on the phone and find out what, what's happening with him. And I thank Gail because she has undying patience with us. And I thank Andy for being able to continue managing a meeting and be polite and kind to all of us. And I thank you for all your work. It's been a, it's a great group. It's a group of very intelligent, thoughtful people. And no matter what happens to us, it's been a, it's been something really worthwhile to work on.
Thanks, Jan. Thank you, Jan. Lam, you have closing comment?
Well, it seems like everybody has done a very good job of thanking everybody. I guess I would do the same. I appreciate you all very much. Thank you. And this is a wonderful learning process. Yeah, that's, that's all I have. Thank you, Robert, for roping me into this.
Thank you, Lam. I'll just say for closing comments, Robert, I will, it has always been instructive, not least the, the challenge to begin with of trying to, to corral your wonderful and long answers and commentary, which is always educational, but also a challenge was great and I appreciated it. I, I will say, I, I really love the chance to get to know you a little bit better at the volunteer picnic. And I will appreciate your absence. When, when you're gone, you'll be missed. Thank you. Thank you for joining us for this time. Gail, also, I just want to say, I'll echo everybody else that's, that's complimenting your patience. I, I know that we can be a testing group for you at some times. And so I appreciate that, that you keep coming back and putting up with us and putting on your best face to present us with the facts of the case as they were. So thank you for, for your role too. Did you have a closing comment, Gail?
Well, I do. I just want to clarify something so that we've, we've all been talking about Robert. But the item that's on the board agenda tomorrow is not to remove him from this committee, but from the planning commission. And he's still on our Clatsop Plain Citizen Advisory Committee and he's still that liaison to the countywide advisory committee. So unless something comes up that is outside of this agenda item, the agenda item is strictly for the planning commission appointment.
Gail, they kindly added that they're sending out the same same letter to every county appointee on every committee.
Yeah.
So, so I, I know I will not be alone in saying, gee, this has gone beyond willingness to serve. So they, they made, I at first thought, gee, you know, this is strictly to remove me as a planning commissioner. But they made clear as an added sentence that every appointee to a county committee is going to get the same demand for this letter that was created at a workshop. You know, it, it had never been, anyway. It's just one of those oddities. But, you know, it, I'm, I'm, I had expected to also continue as a non-planning commissioner, member of the advisory committee. But they've, they've covered their bases. And every, every appointee on every county committee is going to get the same requirement. Period. But thank you, Gail. Definitely love you, appreciate you. And thanks for still existing.
I may be next.
Okay, everyone, I think we have reached the end of our agenda. I appreciate all your time and efforts. We will see you all on November 23rd. I hope all of you enjoy.
Happy Halloween.
Yeah.